All right, we're going to call the special meeting of the Planning Commission to order. This is our retreat with special discussion items for today. And I guess we have a pledge of allegiance. Do we have a flag?
We have no flag.
All right. I'm just reading the agenda. Role call, please. Joan is going to introduce the role calls, shall I say?
Yeah, good. Thank you, Nina. I'm very glad to be here. My name is Joan Goldsmith and I'm going to facilitate our retreat. When I facilitated the planning process for the Main Street ordinance about 20 years ago, it was a big community process with residents and businesses and nonprofits that had a stake in what happened with Main Street. And one of the participants fondly named me Nurse Ratchet. I won't be playing the Nurse Ratchet role. In that setting, I was standing on the table hollering to about 50 people, "Please come back together and let's meet." But I will try to keep us on track and to -- I have in my own notes some ideas about timing for agenda items and I'll ask you. And you can say, "No, we want to keep talking." But I'd like to suggest with the role call, when Nina calls your name, if you would please say one -- or, Jeng's going to call your name, do the role call. Sorry, Jeng. If you would each say one goal or intention or hope you have for this retreat in a word or a sentence or a phrase. Not a big deal, not a long speech. But just -- and Peter James from staff is -- he and I are working together on this and this isn't our first time working together. He'll make notes on our intentions for how the retreat goes. So at the end, we can look at where we are and where you want to go next in your next meeting on the 21st or another retreat. Okay? Is that all right with everybody? Seeing none, okay. So, Jeng, do you want to do the role call?
Okay, I'm going to start at that at the table. So, Leslie Lambert?
Here.
Can you say one?
Oh, that's right. I already forgot. My one hope for an outcome today, that's very simple, is that we learn to use the request to speak button to reduce the chaos on the commission. That is the one outcome I'm really looking for.
Reduce the chaos.
Reduce the chaos and make it easier for the chair to govern the meeting by using -- there's a reason the request to speak button is there.
Okay. Request -- use the request to speak button.
It's not on the agenda.
No, that's just too bad.
Just adds some time.
Jason, thank you. Yeah, I'm here and I -- my personal view is that the commission does a pretty good job of understanding its purpose and its role. And if we can build on that today, that'd be great.
Great. So, build on your purpose and role. Great. Thank you.
Jennifer Kennedy, here. I would say that I hope this retreat will provide us the tools to make us more productive. Not necessarily efficient. I feel that our meetings and our interaction with staff is efficient, but just that we have either tools or information to help us make better decisions and be more productive in a positive way.
Very good. Positive way, be more efficient and use the tools you have. Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Mario Fondabellini, here. I think the retreat for me is a chance to look farther down the road. We're very project-driven. It takes up a lot of the oxygen. It's nice to step back a little bit and see how far down the road we can see and help us fit the projects into that vision.
Great. Farther down the road. Very good.
Amy Anderson, here. I guess I'm most interested on the agenda in this -- in 4B around the education topics because I think that there's a nice opportunity for us to talk about how we can educate ourselves and the community with a focus on the priority goals that the city council has set for us and I think thinking about the wellness tool, too.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. When we get to that, we want to hear your ideas when we get to the agenda.
Chair Nina First.
Besides getting a better understanding of the things that are actually on the agenda, I hope that this slightly less formal format, although it's not that informal, but slightly less formal format will help us understand each other and be able to work more towards consensus when we're on the dais.
Great. Understand each other, get consensus and work less formally. Yeah. Good. Thank you.
So then we move on to our -- there's nobody here from the public.
There is nobody here from the public.
Okay, so if someone--
Did we already highlight who's here from staff?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Good idea.
So, we have, well, Peter James, as we've already pointed out, who's our writer for today. We have Frances Stephan, who's our mobility guru. We have Susan Cola, who's our attorney. Jing Yao, who's our planning manager. David Martin, who's our planning director. And Stephanie Reich, who is our urban designer.
And Kyle.
I mean--
And Kyle.
Kyle Firsthead, who is our commission -- commission, what's our official name? Secretary?
Yeah.
Okay. Commission secretary basically keeps us on the tip.
Great. So, did you want to hear goals from each staff member or?
I think that sounds like a great idea. Let's hear from staff.
I'll start. Yeah, I'd like to hear and learn more ways that, you know, that staff can help the commission to do their job, some of the things that were mentioned. I know Jennifer has some thoughts about staff reports and those kind of things. And with all the work that goes into, you know, the reports and putting all this fish together, yet if we need to fine-tune that a little bit, then we definitely want to hear that because I think that's something we could definitely accommodate. Sometimes we're, you know, supplying things maybe you don't need and we're not giving something that you really need. So, that's one thing. And then looking ahead, you know, how we can help you get information about upcoming topics and things that will be the focus of the city's planning over the next several years, kind of what Mario was saying, is how do we bring in guest speakers and others who can help with education for the planning commission and for staff so we can all have a focused on future.
Great, David. Thank you.
Not too dissimilar from David. You know, I think my interest is hearing from the commission how we can best support you. I think the education topic is particularly interesting. I know there's been different things done in the past, but -- and we've had some speakers come in, you know, when we're doing the plan or what have you. And this is a really nice opportunity to hear sort of broadly about topics that you're interested in and will help us figure out how to best deliver that information for you. So, you know, we don't -- we haven't done one of these in a really long time, so, you know, this is a really nice opportunity for us to be together in this manner.
Good. Good. That's great that the staff is requesting the information. That's wonderful.
So, I think similar with just an angle towards the mobility portion of things since you're the de facto mobility commission for the city and yet you spend a lot of time looking at land use projects and development permits. And so I think it's easy to feel disconnected from the day-to-day on mobility. So, what I can do to help you feel more connected and get what you need to feel as effective as we want to be on this topic.
Connected. Good.
Good. Peter, did you want to take a break from writing and comment?
I'm connecting. Listening reporting mode.
I'm here to listen. In my role, I serve both the ARB and the Landmarks Commission and it's really important that those commissions feel connected to the work of the planning commission.
Great. And Susan, did you want to come?
No, I don't really have much to add other than very similar to what other staff members have said. This is an opportunity for you to ask whatever questions you want to ask. I know Jason provided some thoughtful questions and so that's one of the handouts, but it's the opportunity for you to ask whatever it is you want to ask.
Great. Great. Kyle, how about you?
I'm here recording your meeting.
Okay. Is there any request you want to make?
Does speaking be your only?
Thank you. All right. So, Peter, you got to take one break and tell us what you'd like.
I'd like everybody to get along and have a good time. And I just appreciate being in the room to listen to how this shapes up. I've been serving the planning commission for over a decade. I've been through many iterations of it. I really like this commission. And so getting to all of these long-term goals of improved communications, more efficient working relationships using the button, I'm forward to coming out of this with the commitment to do all those things. Go from good to great.
So, Peter and I are growing old together. We worked together years ago on a project, so it's nice to be with you again.
Nice to grow old again.
And I can just say, as a citizen of Santa Monica, you know, public comment, right? I'm just really happy for you that you're doing this. And I wish many more of the commissions would take this kind of time to see where they are and see where you are with staff and work more collaboratively with each other. So, congratulations. Glad to be here.
Can I ask you one thing? Like, I just so -- I had no idea that so many staff members were going to join us this morning and I really, really appreciate you guys taking the time out of understanding wanting to join us. So, thank you.
And I want to acknowledge, even though I'm sure they don't want to say anything, but we do have cable TV staff here, also city staff, so they're also here on a Saturday morning and help us out, so we appreciate that.
Caleb and David, thank you. So, shall we dive into the agenda? Okay. And what I will do is introduce each of the agenda items and maybe suggest the process. But seriously, if you want to do something else with it or spend more time on it, please tell me and we'll do that. Our first item, and it's really appropriate to start with the mission statement because that should frame all your work and your position in the community and your mission -- your position within city, the city organization. So, Jane has done a wonderful job in giving each of you a copy of your current mission statement and then -- and this is what we can work with today. The responsibility, jurisdiction and authority. This is--
From the city charter.
The city charter. So, I don't think we'll address this today. If you wanted to relook at the city charter, that probably would mean a joint meeting with, I don't know, through city council or city manager and attorney or governor Brown. I don't know. Today, we're going to look at your mission statement and I'd like to do it in two ways. One, I'd like to ask you to discuss any substantive changes that you want to make in the mission statement. Propose them. If anybody proposes a substantive change, Peter will record it and we'll see if we get consensus on it. If not, it may be -- if we don't have consensus on the change, then it may be something you have to come back to. We also have post-its. And if there's a language change, for example, lessen congestion on streets, you might want to change congestion, someone might want to change congestion to traffic. Notice my agenda item. But you might want to change that word, a wording or a grammatical change, then take a post-it, stick it up here and put your change and the staff will rework it for you. Okay? So, if it's not a substantive change, then you can make a post-it change, a suggestion. So, the mission statement, I don't think I need to read it to you. You have it in front of you. You have it here. You have it up on the PowerPoint. Is there anything, anybody wants to propose? Excuse me for standing. It's not a post-it. Jennifer, is there anything you wanted to propose to change? Yes, Leslie?
I have issues with the item, prevent undue concentrations of population. For one thing, I don't know what it means. I also wonder whether that contradicts sort of the regional approach to housing production, for example. Is somebody writing on the wall?
Yep.
Yeah. Crazy.
That's where all those tigers go.
I understand where it's going, I kind of. I mean, frankly, I'd like to say I've eliminated it, but I think it ignores the homelessness crisis and the need for permanent supportive housing, the need for affordable housing, the fact that we're in a region with a housing crisis. And although I don't think we take that as literally as it says, the future planning commission could. And I think that would be not in the interest of the city or the region if we did that. So, I'm not altogether sure what language should be inserted instead. And plus, we have three transit stations and clearly density around transit is something that everybody, I assume, has some idea whether it should be or not. And so that would contradict that. So, in terms of -- my preference would be eliminate it, but if anyone could think -- I think it's just too unclear. It feeds sort of community interests that don't want anything to happen at all, no growth whatsoever.
Okay. So, let's get any other changes and then we'll come back and discuss.
That's the big one for me.
Okay. Big one for you. Anybody else have one that they want, Mario? Yeah.
Well, one thing that's interesting about this mission statement, first of all, how old is it? When was it last updated?
Yeah, that's what Jeng and I were just talking about. So, we don't think -- we don't recall this ever being updated. So, you're looking at a mission statement from 1946, so, you know--
So, it reflects the problems of 1930.
Exactly. Yes, we're definitely at a different time zone here.
Okay. So, but the thing that impresses me about, without getting into specific details, is the difference in the grain of this thing. So, you drive down the congestion for traffic, but you cover, you know, open space as being a big deal. But for instance, you don't have anything there about sustainability. You mentioned sewage as if that's a really important thing, but Wi-Fi might be more valuable in this day and age than sewage, the control of the sewage system, which is kind of given.
So, Peter, where are you pressing? You're saying--
I'm using that as an example of we see these different big concepts and little concepts mushed together in the statement, but when you go to the little concepts, some of them are kind of dated.
Okay.
So, for instance, congestion will never be dated, but Vision Zero might be included in that and it might not be. And is it lumped up there with safety, which is the fifth word of the first phrase, you know? So, what I'm saying is there's a mismatch between the categories and the fine-grainedness of that. And so what I like to do is maybe think about how we can resolve that. There are three things I would like to see added to this thing. One is Vision Zero, I think, is a public safety--
Vision Zero, where would you add that?
Well, it's just part of congestion or mobility or something like that.
Here.
And there, right? And I'd also like, as one of our mandates, and then the other question I would like to add is there has to be something about sustainability. In 1947, gas was two cents a gallon, you know, and what cares? But in this day and age, we're talking about solar rights and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. So, sustainability could be another bullet point?
I would rank it on that level.
Okay.
But, you know, that wraps up sea level rise and wraps up all these bigger issues that we need to deal with in a lot of areas.
Okay. Thank you. So, adding sustainability as perhaps another bullet point. Good. Okay. Other comments? Yes, Jason?
Yeah, I agree with the points raised so far.
Oh, okay.
But I do want to say that I just think that there are ideas that, within this, that should be incorporated into a brand-new mission statement, but this thing just, we should start from scratch. This seems like it's justifying a city's police power under zoning, which we're, I think we're beyond that. And we can tap into some of these bigger ideas of what we're after, how well-being fits into it. And so I would suggest that we not talk about adding bullet items when we talk about it.
Okay. So, Mario, was that where you were going when you raised 1947?
Yeah, I was just saying, let's get right to 2018.
Okay. Yeah. Does anybody object to the commission, maybe a subset, a couple of people in the commission doing a rough draft with the staff on an updated 2018 to 2020 or 22 new mission statement? Anybody object to that?
Can we just--
Do we have consensus on that piece of work to happen?
I'm wondering, yeah, we could have the city attorney to talk about that process for them.
It's not an objection. It's just to point out that this has to be approved by the voters and it's very interesting that--
Not this one.
Oh, I thought you said this was in the charter. No, I'm sorry. I thought you said it was in the charter. My fault.
Yeah.
But it's something that, I guess the question is, how are you proposing to do this? Through city council or like a resolution to yourselves or? Well, let's see. First, let me divide it up because this is, that's a very good point now. It's going to go in there. First, do we have consensus that you, rather than picking this apart, you need an updated new mission statement that reflects current reality? And then, if you have consensus on that, then the question would be, to whom is it submitted, Susan? Who does it go to? That's something to discuss. One second. Who does it go to? Does it go to voters? Does it go to city council? Where does it go? Or to the attorney's office or the city manager? Yeah.
Are you proposing a complete rewrite or?
Yes.
Okay. My general feeling is that it needs some updating, but not necessarily a complete rewrite. I would love to add information about sustainability and well-being and the concentration part, you know, needs some work, but I feel like there's a good foundation.
Okay. So, anybody object to seeing what you've got here as a foundation and updating it, bringing it to the current reality? Anybody object to that?
I think starting all over again, yeah, I think starting all over again is a really good idea.
Okay. And Amy, you're saying not?
Yes, I feel like this is really, really outdated in its approach. I think like Mario's saying, there's like whole concepts that are missing from this. I'd say the tone is off, right? There's a, we some, they're like negative or neutral rather than kind of setting, you know, positive goals for ourselves, so.
Yeah. Jason, where are you on this? Start from, do a new one?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So, Jennifer, are you willing to live with doing-- Well, are you willing to live with doing a new one?
Yeah.
And you can pull from--
I imagine we would.
What's there and build that in.
It's broad strokes because it's a mission statement, so.
Yeah. Okay.
I just wanted to add that one thing that I see missing is, you know, we have a much more complicated system in the city now. We have, you know, our mobility issues are big and broad and sustainability is big and broad. We have a big historic preservation program that ARB has really important work that it's doing and I think that the planning commission needs to consider all of the city's goals and priorities in its decision-making and that is a really important, we're sort of where it all comes together. And so we need to always remember to think about that when we're doing that work.
Great. Okay. So, there's a lot, I see a lot of nodding and input on a new mission statement. And of course, you want to look at what you've got and see how it needs to be reworked or what, whether you want to keep it or if you want to just, you know, go all the way back to Vision Zero and start from there. Any objection to this reworking and having a subcommittee do that and return to a meeting, a public meeting to present, first present it to the commission members, then discuss it at a public meeting and then take it to where it needs to go for final approval?
I don't think we can submit it to the commission without a public meeting because that would be a Brown Act violation.
Well, I don't think we can form a subcommittee until our next public meeting. I mean, we have to agendaize even forming a subcommittee.
Well, the Landmarks Commission, as you know, you're on the agenda.
Huh? Yeah, I know. So, I'm just saying if we decide to, that that's something we want.
So, I believe that we do that at our next meeting, which is the one from today.
Okay. Anybody object? I think you've got, I think you've got consensus. So, Nina, you're saying at your next meeting on the 21st, you want to put that on the agenda, is that right, Mario?
To establish a subcommittee to do a first draft.
Okay.
At your next meeting.
Yeah, the agenda's already posted for March 21st. It'll be April 4th.
April 4th. Thank you, Jeng.
So, we would maybe, if, while we're all here together and we're in this meeting and we're discussing this, if there's any more little bits of input that you all as a group want to say, this is the time because we won't be able to hear it before the subcommittees.
Jennifer, you mean about like the content?
Yes. If there's any other things that you think is important, like housing and affordability, for example.
Homelessness.
Homelessness.
I just wanted to point out when I was--
Homelessness, you got that there. Yeah, good.
When I see what already exists, when I got bullet point about lessening the congestion on streets, to me, that really stands out as one of those things that is so ancient because now we need to think about circulation on our sidewalks, in the streets, everywhere.
Our bike paths.
And our bike paths. And so I, like I said, to me, I kind of see a foundation that's there, you know, big issues or themes that, sure, it could be entirely reworded, but I still think that this will help drive us together.
Yeah. Very good. Let me make a suggestion, which is, Nina, if you would entertain volunteers who would like to work on the redrafting so that when you--
Well, we would do that at our--
When you do it at your meeting, but I'm saying before the meeting, if some people say they want to be involved, to let you know so that at the meeting, you can immediately ask that, a group--
Everybody think about it so when we ask you when it's agendaized, you'll be ready to respond.
Thank you.
I think she's trying to--
I'm trying to facilitate this moving along.
I know, I know. I'm just trying not to break the law.
Does everybody agree you'll think about it?
Yes.
And that means staff as well, Jeng, because you will have to have some staff input. Okay?
I just wanted to say one other little thing about congestion because you know how I love to give you the history. But it was occurring to me the other day that all of our north-south streets in Santa Monica are 80 feet wide. That's how they were designed regardless of if they're big feeder streets or small-side streets. And that's really the core of the problem. So, it's almost, congestion has been a problem since day one because when they drew the map, they thought the only place anyone would ever want to go was LA. So, I just thought of--
Isn't it? Thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to give you a little history lesson on each topic.
Well, history lesson is good and I wanted you to make a note on this, Peter, because the word, the word congestion was created, what, '47 or 1947 or what year was that? The language needs to be looked at. I mean, I, you know, I have six books published, two bestsellers. I'm very conscious of language. So, designate, regulate, restrict are those words you want to use. I'm just saying to you, as you think about a new statement, look at the language and what it connotes, not only to you, but to the other departments. You know, I'm glad you're here, Susan, because, you know, you can represent other departments. But I, and I've interfaced most recently with housing and the city manager's office when I mediated between Step Up on Second and 26th Street neighbors. So, I know that your work impacts and interfaces and we're going to talk about that a little later. So, and I want to just suggest that you look at language and vocabulary as it connotes today, not in '47. Yes, Amy?
I think a couple of things that I wanted to add, I totally agree about the language, right? I think that that's contributing to this kind of negativity. I would say that I feel like we've kind of said it, like the concept of--
Please.
The concept of mobility as opposed to congestion, right? Like the congestion part is the negative part and what we're really trying to do is to facilitate mobility. is to facilitate mobility, like concepts around equity and opportunity. I would really encourage us to stay as high level, as reasonable, when we're doing the mission statement, because I think that creates, helps us to avoid the need to redo it. Right? So, what, like, when we're talking, not that we shouldn't mention sustainability, but when we're thinking about sustainability or homelessness, like really what's, what's behind the heart concerns around that.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so do we have completion on this? And Nina, do you want to just recapitulate where you're headed for the next meeting in April, what is the date?
April 4th.
April 4th. What's going to happen at the next, at the April 4th meeting?
April 4th, we'll have an agenda item for the planning commission to appoint a subcommittee to work with staff to revise the mission statement.
Okay. Any objections? We're going to move forward.
What's the date on that meeting again?
April 4th.
April 4th.
Good work. Okay. And please, I just want to recommend that you, each of you on the commission and staff, think about this document, and how you want to change language, you want to add concepts, you want to update it, so that the process can move forward really easily, well. The next, can we move to the next topic on the agendas? And that could influence where you go with your mission statement. The next item is 4B, developing a list of commissions, education topics, and possible format for presentation. I thought we ought to brainstorm. Peter will report for us.
What?
Stephanie's jumping in there, thank you. And I just wanted to say about that, that when you're talking about topics and format for presentation, that you think about, and I'm saying this because I've had some interviews with some of you, that I know there are differences of points of view on the commission, that you may want to take a topic, topic X, and you may want to have Harriet come and say yay, and Sam come and say nay. The same event, or in subsequent events, so that we don't have a fight on, well, it's only Harriet, and we're only talking about in favor of X. So, I want to broaden the conversation, so that you can get recommendations for topics. Okay? So, anybody have any topic that they want to recommend to discuss?
So, I think that this has to do with our internal education. I would bring ourselves up to speed in this unbelievably fast-moving world, where there are more unknowns than knowns. I'll take the example of a self-driving car. People are saying bad news, people are saying good news, more unknowns than knowns at the moment. So, we have a responsibility to hear the different viewpoints. So, I would like to have a little education thing on the self-driving car, and how that might impact us. I would like to have a session on solar access rights. And I would like to have a discussion, which is really the housing authority's purview, but I'd like to have them instruct us on affordable housing.
Okay, did you get all of those?
Right. These are top thorny issues, where it's hard to really wrap your mind around them. And, and you know, of course, there's always a dream of Vision Zero, but maybe there's more information there than you realize, and we just haven't had the time to dig into it.
Let me just ask one question about the housing. Did you say you wanted someone from the city housing department to address it?
Well, it could be any person who is qualified to give us, bring us up to speed. We're not up to speed on what really works in affordable housing. We just see the lack of it, but we don't see what works. So, I'm using that as an example.
That was actually what I was going to ask you. Affordable housing seems really broad, and I wanted to know more about exactly what you want to know about it, how to provide it, how it helps people, what is it that you're looking for?
Well, I'll use an example. We've decided to tax ourselves, as a city, with a sales tax to create affordable housing. That's going to create X number of units. We have the private sector and the semi-public sector that's producing X number of units to various grants. When you, when you lay that out over time, what does that look like? In other words, what's, how much, how can we provide that to the affordable units, including the homeless issue? That is, how much does it cost to provide an affordable unit to meet all the needs of the demographics of our city, basically that... So, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's a time, it's a time variable to see how this plays out, and see which things have leverage, and which things are necessary, but are going to move the needle.
So, you're linking it to homelessness as well.
I'm talking about the full range, the full spectrum.
I have two thoughts. I know we've all been discussing, are somewhat concerned about the impacts of the Housing Affordability Act. So, I would recommend, I know that HCD, state part of Housing Community Development's going to be getting, begin having sort of briefing sessions in Southern California. It'd be good to know when those are. I went to one a couple of weeks ago. But if we could even get somebody from HCD to the commission, if they're down here at that time, I think that'd be really useful. The other issues, I think that there's some confusion about the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Model, which basically assigns to each jurisdiction how many of different income groups housing must be produced. I think there's some confusion about that, about how it's arrived at, and so maybe somebody from BSCA. And also, and with that is the notion that those are goals, not caps. I mean, you can actually produce more than a RENA allocation.
Okay, so you need, you need a lot of information about that.
Right, 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 right. And then, you know, in terms of that, and then what actually is being produced in the city. I think we need to compare that, because I'm not all together. Sure, we always have that...
You know when you're winning.
Yeah. And we have that information.
We have it online. It's been submitted to HCD, so you can actually go to the website, and all of the awards have been uploaded for this cycle since 2013.
Cool. And sort of, part of that is, I think we've met our extremely low and very low income targets, but does that mean we don't produce anymore? I mean, do we like, we produce higher income affordability units? Does that really address the homeless issue? And the answer is no.
Okay. Thank you. So, but that, this is a rich topic.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of input and connection to it. So, you know, that may be a top priority. Susan, did you want to comment?
And I was just going to add, just, you know, there's been questions about what lowering density means within the Housing Accountability Act, so I think it'd be good for you to set up some guidelines, so that you understand what criteria you want to look at, in order to determine whether there is lower density. Because it's not, it's not a question that's answered in the law, so I think you have to come up with the criteria, so that would be something to look at.
Well, they have objective criteria, right?
Well, this is a little, this is different. This has to do with when, what constitutes lower density, because, and I'll talk about it more later, but it's a very broad definition, which could be read to mean feasibility. And so, that's something that you guys need to agree upon, as far as criteria.
I just think it'd be really useful to have somebody from the state who's actually administering the...
Be lovely.
Yeah. Okay, but look, what's coming out of this, what I hear is that you want to get knowledge and information and data, and then, what are you going to do with it? Susan's raising that. Where do you want to go with it? How do you want to build it into your decision-making? So, what I want to just flag, if this is okay with you, is that after you have each speaker or educational experience, you have a subsequent meeting or conversation with the expert there about, what does this mean for us? Because that's always the question. What does it mean for our deliberations? What does it mean for our guidelines? What does it mean for our decisions? Okay? Is that all right?
So, you're suggesting we have more, there are not just lectures, but interactive meetings and workshops?
Yeah, exactly.
What do people feel about that?
More Saturday meetings.
Yes, Jennifer?
My input on this item is about upcoming state legislation. I, I pretty much know why, but I think it's, I want to hear it again, maybe, or we could talk about it. I think it would be helpful for the commission to hear from staff, even if it's like during a director's report, or as part of an agenda item, potential upcoming legislation. And I'm not saying necessarily, although we can talk about it here, I guess, like a lobbyist is going to come and tell us, you know, what's, what we should keep, keep an eye out for. But I really feel that that kind of information is helpful to us, because if it doesn't hit us over the head as a part of our daily lives, then we can't know about something we don't know about, right? So, even just getting a heads-up could give us the ability to then look into something like that on our own, in our, on our own time, which would help educate us as commissioners. But perhaps maybe there could be something more broad, like not just the director's report, but maybe an agenda item. Again, not to say one way or the other, but to say, this is what it currently says, this is where it is, this is how it might affect you, think about it. Because I feel on the planning commission, a lot of times, we're very reactionary. And I'm, you know, having watched a lot of council meetings, and trying to interact with council members and stuff, sometimes I find out that they also don't necessarily have a heads-up on certain pending legislation, and then that makes me say, well, you know, how, anyway, I'm just saying that knowing about this kind of stuff can help you make better decisions.
Yeah, and David, you're nodding. Did you want to say anything about that, Mrs. Smith?
Well, just that we, you know, we have a lobbyist, and we do keep, you know, on top of things that are pending, so it wouldn't be hard to bring certain things, or expect certain things to the commission.
So, that's something you could all...
What about for that? Because there is a, sorry.
No, it's okay.
There is a lobbyist, and there's, you know, a whole machine related to that, just like a newsletter, an information item in our packet, when there's something new coming up.
Amy's nodding.
Yeah, I guess I'm nodding, because I think, right, to provide us something written might be more efficient than having someone come. Having someone come, for the case, it's like things change so much.
Okay, well, we could give them a handout.
There are also websites we can do on our own. There's the League of California Cities, there's Housing California, there are all sorts of legislative websites you could do on your own, and look at. And maybe you could even do that yourselves, as a sort of a way to act...
Well, maybe you should educate each other, or yourselves, on what of those websites...
Housing California is the major housing one, isn't it, Amy?
The state one.
But you might want to devote a session to looking into what the...
We can, we can certainly send the commission some of the email update lists that you can send. If you want to be personally kept abreast of the things that happen, that's how we find out.
We get it.
You know, because we are on those same lists, you know, so it's not just from our lobbyists, but various advocacy groups or whatever, even directly from HCD directly themselves, you know, what's, what's happening, whether it be housing or something else.
Okay, Jennifer, did you?
Just to respond to, I do, because I have, I have knowledge of some places where I can get that information too. But then if I were at home on my own, looking at it, I might say, oh, I think this relates to this, and then I can form my own opinions. But I think because we, we have a relationship with staff, it's helpful sometimes for them to say, hey, you know what, I read those 50 things, and here's the three that you should really think about.
Why don't you just ask them?
And I could, and I do. But I, but we're a public body, and so it's, it's also important for the community to know these things, and so they happen in a public forum for a reason.
Great, okay, very good. So, and that's what we're talking about here, is what do you want, how do you want to educate yourself as a public body with possible public being present? Yes, Susan?
I was just going to suggest that maybe one thing to do is to agendize, like a legislative, you know, once a month, or however often staff feels it needs to. And then, it could be on consent, and if you want to pull it, like they'll have a little summary, if you want to pull it, then you can pull it, otherwise it just stays on consent.
Okay, great. May I make a suggestion that staff take these discussion topics, or in education experiences, and come back to you with a presentation of a set of priorities, or dates when, and people who could present to you? Is that something that David and Jim, is that something you all could do for the commission? And then, would that satisfy you in taking a look at what they put together?
I haven't had a chance to give my input.
Sorry?
I haven't had a chance to make my suggestion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm not seeing you, because you're sitting next to me. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
There, there were a couple of things that, mobility is something I'm very interested about. It's personally more outside of my personal experience, just in terms of this work, and so, and this whole congestion problem, I understand that really the goal we're working towards is increasing the capacity of our roads, since we can't increase the size of our roads. And I just feel like, you know, I'm not sure what it is I need to learn, and that's part of the problem. You know, I, you know, when I talk to Francie, a lot of times I'll make a suggestion, and then she'll answer with something, you know, like the conversation we had yesterday, where, you know, we were talking about buses, and I was saying that there needs to be an easier way for local people to get around within Santa Monica, very short trip, so we don't need our cars, and it's easy. And I went to buses, and then I realized Francie is thinking about that too, but she's thinking about doing it a whole different way. And I would just like to understand how to think like Francie more, and understand... You know, I want to, you know, I want to have a better understanding of how to think about it more flexibly, and, you know, I just, I don't know enough even to give you the item, but I think that there's a lot more we could think about. And it could impact even conditions we put on projects and things like that, I don't know.
Yeah, Francie's nodding, she's going to be happy to do that.
So, that's one of them.
And Amy have another?
I have another. And that one, I think a lot about public and private open space, and its connection to well-being, and quality of life, and parks, like public open space that's not within developments. And I'm not 100% sure that we totally understand how we're benefiting people with the rules we have. I'm not sure that everybody needs a balcony. I know that builders like to put balconies, because it's an amenity that they can charge money for, but I think for a community, it makes buildings puffier, and it makes them all kind of look the same with all the balconies. I think some balconies are sort of put on because they're required, but they're not in nice places, and that open space would be better somewhere else. And then sometimes I worry that the interior open space is puffing up the buildings, and making them seem really large and dense, and it's freaking out the community. And I also am concerned that these public, shared open spaces within the buildings are, they're, they're almost like interior rec rooms, and are keeping people even from certain populations from going out and using public parks. And so, we don't have as mixed a population in our public parks as we might want, and maybe that is impacting the way people are relating to each other in the community, and feeling part of the community. And so, I'll, I don't know how or who could help us with that, but I just really want to make sure that we're requiring the things that are going to get us where we want to go with health, open space, fresh air, and community.
Great, okay. Powerful agenda item.
It's really complicated, I know, but...
No, but it could be, and, and, I'm sorry, Mario, just one, I just want to say that these agenda items, I want to encourage you to talk about complex education experiences for yourself, because they are interconnected, a lot of these issues. And you can have multiple sessions and multiple speakers presenting the complexity. I mean, I'm speaking here as an educator, but that's certainly true. And Mario, what?
Well, first of all, I agree with that, that those are the kind of thorny issues that there's no clear path, there's so many vectors at work, that it's like, it's a black box, it's very hard to move ahead on that. But with that idea, one thing I would like to encourage us, in whatever list we come up with, is to have speakers from different points of view. Don't have your favorite planner who's speaking about raising parking fees, to use an example, as the solution to everything, which it might be, but I'd like to hear some other points of view. And then, I would like to add one thing to my list, which is C-level rising, and long-term issue, very complicated, large impacts, blah, blah, blah.
Did you miss the workshop the other night?
Yeah, I went to it.
It was amazing. Okay, so I just have to plug it. We had an amazing turnout for a rainy, kind of cold Thursday evening. We had about 33 people. How are you, very, very smart scientists? It is videotaped, we'll have it up on the website.
Oh, great, great.
So, I'll send you the link. It was an excellent session, and very, we, we set that up to be very accessible, because it can be a very wonky, rainy topic.
Well, I would love to hear your input, how it affects us.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll talk about it, start talking about it at the Dr. Kogi study session. And yeah, we certainly, I'll send you the link when we have the video of it.
Wonderful.
Yeah, great.
Thank you, Jim. And Mario, I just wanted you to know that we live on 18th Street, just North Ocean Park Boulevard, and we're... and we're, we're building a pier.
House in front of our house for the rising of the city.
Beachfront property.
We're already working on it, yes.
I just wanted to put, to Nina's point, on April 6, UCLA is doing an all-day session on community health and the built environment. And if you kind of plug into those kinds of things outside of Santa Monica, they're really worthwhile. It's April 6, it's free.
Where is it at UCLA?
I'll send you guys the stuff.
Yeah, would you send us?
But community health and the built environment sounds like what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. And look, you know now what some of you are concerned about. If you know of events, let each other know by email or let the staff know, and they can let you know where to go and how to get there. Yes, Amy, you had something?
Yeah, I just, you know, one topic that I thought might be of interest, I was whispering to David and trying to remember the five priorities of the city. And I think it would be interesting to find a speaker to talk to us about how our land use planning and zoning regulations and planning in general impact issues of equity. And I think that there oftentimes in our, in our, in our systems and in our, I don't know, government infrastructure and our rules and regulations, there are consequences that we don't always see and understand, right? And I think, you know, for me, equity is about opportunity for all types of economic and racial and all types of people, right? And I think an inclusive community is one of the goals of the city. So kind of having, being educated and being able to have that lens put on about how our decisions around zoning regulations and things like that might have an equity impact, I think would be helpful.
Great.
I guess, I don't want to take us too long, but I'm wondering if staff actually have any ideas about education. I totally agree with Nina about the mobility stuff, right? Trying to understand best practices from other communities, I think would be some sort of...
Well, Amy, you and I didn't plan this, but your comments and inviting staff feed very much into the next agenda item, which is your, the discussion of the interaction and coordination with other city boards, commissions, is worked relevant to the planning commission. So I'd like to just continue, let's hear from staff. And, you know, mobility may be, you know, Francie, you should speak next. And let's look at what other commissions and other departments and other staff you want to relate to, you want to bring in here, you want to have joint sessions with. Because certainly some of these topics can be addressed by them, and this takes us into the next item, moves us along. So go ahead.
So two things. One is, I want to, three things. You guys have hit on a lot of really great things that I'm really happy to hear that you want to learn more about. The second one is that shared mobility is the other piece of the puzzle. We talked a lot about self-driving cars, but at the end of the day, one key piece of that is going to be, how do we get people to be more comfortable with the idea of sharing rides and sharing devices? So I think that's a key piece of it. And the last thing is, I have the sense that other commissions are more effective at internally pushing agendas. For example, Rec and Parks is a commission that I don't think my colleagues would disagree, like forces us to bring them things that's not totally clear that's in their purview. And, sorry, that's big tape.
I'd agree with that.
But, you know, I just, it's noteworthy that you have such a full plate, that I think sometimes opportunities pass you by to influence larger things that are happening in, within the city. And I don't know exactly the mechanism, but I would...
What would be an example of that? Parking fees in the downtown booths?
Um, Rec and Parks master plan, Airport Park. I think there's a...
Pier Bridge.
Pier Bridge, the entire CIP priority setting. They've got an entire budget setting. I mean, usually there's been moments where you guys have taken the time to sort of talk about what you want for the budget. But, you know, that happens every year. And I think that when you don't take a stance on it, you miss an opportunity to affect what we actually are doing on a day-to-day basis, as opposed to being reactive to private sector proposals and as well as, yeah, so, I think that's...
Good. I'm seeing some nods. So other conversations you want to have with other city departments, other commissions, that you want to hear from them or you want to send messages to them? Yes, Jennifer?
I would like to have, even if it's once every four years, like a joint session with the housing commission. We've talked about it before, this isn't like new. I don't know if it will ever happen, but I think there might be some other commissioners who also think it might be helpful. I know it's hard to get people together for extra meetings and things, but maybe, you know, I'm not sure how it would work out, but, you know, we all have a lot of concerns about horrible housing education and stuff, and that might be one of those areas enough. The other thing is, when I got on the planning commission, we had council member liaisons, which disappeared, I guess, based on potentially lack of availability of council members to participate and be the liaison. I'd like to hear from staff if they think that that's something that would ever come back. Was it necessary then, not necessary now? Was it necessary, was it not necessary then, but maybe necessary now? Is it not even worth thinking about? I was just wondering if that's another connection or a link that would help bring everybody together, you know, to kind of go to what Francie was saying, you know, instead of being reactionary, it's like you can be proactive when there's more people from different settings around, listening and ideas around.
Okay, I think Nina, I'm wondering if she's... Did you want to comment on that?
Well, I think that they thought that council members being in our meetings was biasing them, and that's why they pulled them out.
Yeah, it wasn't it.
It was a legal issue. But I also, I was just realizing, just in terms of things that we could know more about, is the whole well-being issue and topic, and, you know, I don't think we know enough about that. You know, I actually have a friend who's, you know, expert at PhD, she's brilliant, knows all about this kind of thing.
Oh, my God.
It's food, well-being on a plate. You know, so I feel like there's a lot more we can understand about how we can, not just what makes people feel good, but how we can really incorporate it directly into our work and our ordinances and our conditions and that.
You're getting nods from staff and commission members. Yes, Mario?
So, this combining the last two agenda items.
Yeah.
But one of the questions, when I sit in this room, I always get the feeling that we have, on the amateur side, let's say the commission, we have a base of nods that looks like that muffin. We're very strong on some things, and then there's a lot of fluff in there, not that there's a lot of fluff.
Use a different metaphor, please.
We have different densities, is what I'm saying. And yet, at this table, there are people who are very deep in certain areas, obviously mobility is one of, you know, urban planning, blah, 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 blah. And so I'd like to flip the question over the other way. When you are preparing your agendas, when you're doing your staff reports, blah, 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 and you think, I'm going to have to bring this up to the commission, they'll never, their eyes are going to be later where they can't handle it. And so you dumb it down. Maybe I'm asking if that's happening. And the second part of that is, what do you think we should know from your side? What are we weak in? What are we ignorant in that we can't think our way out of a paper bag on that particular issue or in that domain of knowledge? That you, being professionals, get to dig into it every day from a thousand different directions? I'd like to hear from staff.
Can I jump onto that too? And just also add that I think sometimes it's important, it would be beneficial for the community to do these education sessions, even if it's something that we have some knowledge on, right? That educating the community about what lies behind some of the goals. Because I think it's sometimes confusing to the community about how denser housing can impact mobility.
Right. So, but I'd like to hear from staff.
Let's hear from staff. David or Jane or Francie?
I can start. So just, I think, a couple of thoughts. One is, I think you hit the nail on the head, that as staff, you know, we take our role seriously in the sense that we, we are very much filters for, as you said, a thousand viewpoints that are coming from the community. So we do try to present that as much as possible to you, the commissioners making decision, and the council ultimately makes a decision on a policy plan that, you know, we've, and I think the expectation is that we have taken in that input, kind of analyzed it, provided for you our best professional recommendation, which I hope we always do, and that it's based in sound data and analysis. And whether people agree with that or not is sort of, you know, out of our control. But, you know, one of the things that we do try to provide is that, and help the community understand as well, is that there are any particular issue, when anyone comes and talks to us, people tend to come from their perspective, and that makes a lot of sense, because they can only draw from their own personal experience and what they're seeing and feeling every day. And that's perfectly understandable. And, you know, to some degree, we just try to help people see that there is another side to this, and here's the why. And that was the second part, is we always attempt to explain, particularly in larger community meetings, an understanding of where decisions are being made and why they're being made. In the hopes of, you know, that we can encourage sort of a level playing field, that everyone's speaking the same vocabulary, that there can be an equal dialogue about, you know, why things are happening, and it's not coming from a place of, you know, not that there's any wrong in that, again, but that it's not just personal opinion, that there is, and that they can acknowledge that there is another side to that, but I still choose to feel this way. And I think that that's, you know, something that, I think that, not that the commission, I think that as a body, you know, there's certainly different sides to it, and I know that, you know, we provide that information and you consider it. But that's something that we'll always continue to try and bring forward to the commission that, you know, to see things from different sides. And, you know, one of the things, I think one of the workshops that we did for the downtown community plan on preservation and change was, the whole intent of that was to bring people from all sides. And you could see from the panelists that were assembled there, we had people from the private sector, people who have done this for a long time, people from preservation, so that it was intended to start a dialogue, you know, about how do we get to this, we all agree there's a shared goal, but, you know, how do you get from A to B? There's many different ways that you can get there. You know, hearing some of the topics that you brought up today, you know, it's making me think about, you know, that we definitely have many, many sides to every topic that you're bringing up. And I'd like to, one of the voices that kind of gets, whether it's fairly or not, kind of vilified, is people from the private sector, because at the end of the day, it's a partnership in how you get to these things. And, you know, we're seeing that in, you know, whether it's housing or even in well-being, you know, that, you know, this is not something that the city can do alone. You know, we need community partners and you need the private sector to step up, you know, to sort of do that stuff. So I think that that's probably a part where, you know, that there needs to be a little greater grasp as to where someone other than a government entity can step in and provide, you know, these things to achievable.
Good, good. Anybody else on staff want to comment?
Yeah, just one, one other thing in addition to the sources and the ability to bring thoughts forward. And I agree that we could bring you from other departments and have them talk about their projects and educate the commission and help you guys understand what's going on. But we also have some resources within our own department. We have, again, our code enforcement, they're working really closely with the attorney's office on like Airbnb-type enforcement, if could be understood. And there's other things going on, of course, with the seismic retrofit that the commission has heard some about. But I think we could also do more to just keep you guys informed of those things as they're working their way through the process and how it impacts your work.
Thank you. And you were both, Mario's question's a good one, and you both are touching on the next agenda item. I'm not trying to push us through, but I see the connection of the discussion of a framework for staff to report back on outcomes and projects. And I know that they've been already approved by the commission. And I know that, Jamie, you have some things you want to present when we get to that item. But I just want to stay for a minute longer with this question of other city boards, commissions, and work that's relevant to this commission comments. Yes, Nina?
Yeah, that's a topic I personally, you know, I think that goes back to something I said earlier, I can't remember under what, yeah, topic. But just the idea that there are so many different priorities that are all really important to the community, and some parts of the community are more dedicated to some, some are others more, just see others as more important and, you know, I think that working with these other commissions to, you know, like it says, it's not on this list, it's on this list. But, you know, like when I go to ARB meetings, for example, even though I'm going there as a planning commissioner, I'm listening as a planning commissioner, but I often talk about preservation in those meetings. Because even though, as Stephanie knows, because she hears me ranting on about preservation there, but, you know, I feel like even if it's in the staff report, the ARB isn't as knowledgeable about what preservation is and how to do it and how to achieve different kinds of programs and goals within a preservation way of thinking that also is contemporary and programmatically efficient and, you know, all those different things. And that's like a special kind of expertise that they could understand and that, you know, anyway, so I feel, and then when we're talking with, you know, an applicant for a DR and they're, we're looking at the housing and we're asking them to put services in their building and provide a special room where those services can be delivered and all that kind of stuff, you know, I wonder sometimes what the social services commission would think of our doing that, and are we really doing it in the most effective way? And maybe we should understand more about what best practices are in their point of view at this time, or, I see someone shaking their head.
I'm sorry, just, first off, finish.
Oh, well, I mean, but, you know, I just feel like we're, sometimes we're doing things, all of the commissions are doing things that impact the other commission's work and the other commission's goals and, you know, better mutual understanding and just a mindfulness of all of those different goals and priorities of the city is really important.
Well, you know, it, and I just, because of my own work interfacing with various departments in the city, I facilitated public meeting for the forest. Two, one on cutting trees and one on the public gardens. Once you reach out to other commissions and other departments, they're going to think, we should have somebody from the planning commission at this next meeting. They're going to think about including you. And so that makes a more integrated city. So I just wanted to put my two cents in. And I wanted to also ask you, how much do you interface with community organizations? My mother, who in her 90s, was very active in Mid-City Neighbors, so it's in my blood. And so I just wanted, wondering, how often do you interface with community agents, community organizations like them and Francis Sunset Park, et cetera?
So this raises something that's not on the agenda, but I think is kind of key. And it looks something like this. That's a great idea.
This is your moment.
Seeing where it's going, see whether it dovetails into one of these items here.
Well, I'm going to ask a hard question, which is, let's say it was valuable to go to other agencies, blah, blah, other boards and commissions, whatever. And let's say that comports, when you actually get it down to it, it's another extra planning commission meeting or off-site event, meeting or otherwise, a month. Let's just choose that's what it takes to meet, read our education goal, blah, blah, blah. Going around the room today, who would be willing to put in, straw poll here, no commitment, you're not signing on the deadline, to put in an extra meeting a month?
That's certainly fair to put that on the agenda.
I'm putting it out there to, and by the way, staff...
Raise your hand if you'd be willing to put in for another meeting a month.
I would.
Okay, so a few of you would and some of you wouldn't. So there you go, Mario, that's news.
Well, then that sets, that sets the bar at, you know, every other month, maybe, whatever. But, and likewise, I've got to say this, there's always tension in this group of staff, and the tension is workload of staff, where you come back to us and say, we can't get that report out until three months from now. And we believe you, we think you work very hard. But that is also a limitation of what's available. And that's just a limitation, that is, staff, budget, only so many hours in a day.
We're going to get into that in a minute.
Yeah, that's coming up later.
Yeah.
But you see where I'm going, these two events dovetail, what we're willing to do has to be matched with what you're...
Yeah. Well, I mean, I wanted to say one thing earlier about, you know, you're asking what you think you need to be educated on. I think you should give you guys, you should give yourselves credit that as planning commissions go, you guys are incredibly educated and incredibly engaged. So you are, you know, you are a great commission.
Very.
It's true. I mean, but I appreciate that, this sort of willingness to learn. I would suggest you might think about sort of turning this idea that everything comes to you at those night meetings inside out and maybe think... to you at those night meetings inside out, and maybe think about where you, like, maybe we can provide you more effectively with conference information, like, you go to conferences where, where experts are already gathering, and you can absorb, and you can absorb that from them, and then similarly, and I hear this a little bit in the theme of going out to the neighborhood groups, is like, turning inside out in terms of, you know, maybe call us if you have a question, right, if you have a burning question, or you just have a topic, you're not sure if it's relevant or not, just feel free to reach out, you know, because it isn't something that we do very often, but we're here as resources outside of that to meetings a month, so I think there might be something to be said for what value can be had by just thinking about kind of what fits into your schedule as opposed to like a big formalized thing.
Okay, very good suggestion, I noticed Leslie buttoning up, there's air conditioning on there, we turned the heat off.
Want me to turn it up a bit?
It's really cold in there.
Just so it's not so cold. Okay, great, so other comments about interfacing with other commissions, I noticed that nobody talked about interfacing with city council, nobody talked about interfacing with city manager's office.
Well, what I was wondering, I mean, I want to know what you guys think about our liaison program with the ARB, and, you know, I know that, you know, maybe I have more time on my hands with my children and all, but, you know, I go to other commission meetings sometimes when they're talking about something that's interesting to me, or I'll watch on TV, or, you know, I definitely pay, try to pay attention, and I'm wondering if, you know, maybe there's more of that, maybe we need to send people to other meetings, maybe we need to encourage other commissions to come and sit in on our meetings, maybe not even as formally as we do at the ARB where we're allowed to talk in the mic, but just make sure people are observing and reporting back to their commissions, and, I don't know, if there's something that we could do there that anyone thinks is beneficial, but, you know, it's all, again, that theme that is always in my hot mind about balancing all these different priorities and not, you know, totally obsessing on the one that is your personal priority, you know.
Susan wanted to get into this, I just wanted to underline one thing that Nina said, which is reporting back, you could easily build in a regular agenda item after roll call, anybody want to report back on any meeting they went to, or any conference they went to, two sentences, you know, you can limit it, you can limit it very tightly, but it is a way of keeping track with each other, Susan?
What I was just going to suggest to you is, this emphasizes how important it is to have a good mission statement, so that you sort of refine what it is you want to look at, and also depending on, you know, we have to do the research as to who has to approve this, but, you know, keep in mind that council may have a certain idea, and, you know, it may not work out the way you guys want it to work out, and also don't want you to get frustrated if you feel that you have the ability to go into all these different areas, but then can't get anything done, so again, it really ties to the mission statement, and having that validated by, you know, the city council, I think, at a minimum.
Great, thank you, thank you.
I asked earlier about the council liaison at Planning Commission, which sounds like it's not, it's dead in the water, but how often do council members hear about what the planning commission does at weekly meetings, do they receive an email about the projects that were approved, or conditional use permits, or any other topics that we discuss on a weekly or monthly basis, and is it up to them to simply read it, and then if they don't read it, then they get no information, or is that information provided to them either personally or in meetings so that they hear it, like how do they know about what we are doing?
Jing, did you want to respond to that?
All right, I was about to say, I don't know that there's a formal, but they seem, they seem very well informed about what happens at meetings, whether because they watch the meeting, or they hear from someone that was there, I mean, if certainly there's an issue that the, has controversy or the committee's concerned about it, they are not shy about contacting council members about a decision the planning commission made, or, you know, it might even be appealed, and, I mean, very often after a meeting, if there's something of concern, we'll hear the next day from a council member, you know, with a question as to what happened last night, or, you know, why was something done, and so that's not an uncommon occurrence.
I agree with that, and there is really no, like Jing said, there's no formal process, but we do communicate directly with the city manager's office, and he needs to regulate with all the council members, so he's updating them on things that are going on, that the commission knows.
Okay, and we're going to get into this question of how do you report back to the council in a minute, but Jennifer, what?
So, this, part two of that is, do you feel that there should be more of a way, rather than just a planning commissioner, or do you think, would it be helpful for you, or any staff members, to have a more formal informing of the council, rather than just a planning commissioner if something's coming up, or a member of the community, hey, this is not going well.
I just say from my personal perspective, and of course it depends on what people want, and we're happy to do, to do whatever, but it seems that, you know, when council members are interested in a topic, they definitely contact one of us, or all of us in some cases, so I feel like we have very good, you know, contact and communication with them, and I'm confident that if they have questions, they will ask, and we also, you know, try to update our permit list and all those things that indicate when projects have been through the process, when they've been approved, so that tool is there for them as well, I know some council members watch, you know, pretty regularly, they're watching you on Wednesday nights and see what you're up to, so I feel like the communication's good, but if there are other tools that either you guys think, or council members think are needed, then we're happy to look at that.
Well, yes.
It seems like if there's a breakdown in communication, that should come from the council, and if the council feels they aren't getting informed of what we're doing, and they want the agendas, that should come from them, not necessarily us.
Okay, okay, well, this is connected to the next agenda item, by the way, there's a party going on just down here. The cake looks gray. So, I just, I asked to close the door because this is also a working airport, and this is noisy, sorry?
I might think about lunch as well.
Oh, yeah, we have lunch arranged, Jing, when did you want to do the sandwiches?
It's whenever, if you feel like you want to take a break.
Well, why don't we go till noon, and then we'll have lunch, okay, or noon, but, because I want to, we've started edging into this next agenda item, and I think we should probe it, because it's connected to a lot of the comments, which is a framework for staff to report back on outcomes of projects approved by the planning commission.
Well, we haven't, no, I haven't really heard much from people on the last one, I mean, we've asked questions, but we haven't actually, you know, I mean, I still don't know, do you guys think that we?
I think, I think you're right, but I think also we should, we believe that that's an important issue, that we should take the initiative and maybe look at the agendas of other boards and commissions, to see if there's anything on their agendas that interests us, and attend a meeting or not attend a meeting, or whatever, but, and I think we need to take some initiative ourselves in reaching out and looking at the other boards and commissions' agendas, housing commission being, being major on that.
I was going to say a similar thing, right, like, is there a way to sign up to get commission agendas sent to us?
Sign the website.
It's really complicated, though, and I tried it, and I get some of them sometimes, and not some of them.
So theoretically, though, we can, we can ask to get them sent on, okay?
So is that a consensus feeling, that you get the agendas sent to you from the other?
We can research that, because we have automatically signed up all of you, whether you want it or not, for certain lists, yeah, so we signed all of you up, you have, you're all on our PCD list, where we send out ARB landmarks, PC, so you should be getting all of those agendas in your S and G, if you're not.
I just, I just think that we can sign all of you up. We need to take some responsibility ourselves and load staff up with this stuff, all you need to go is on the city webpage, and the agendas for every board and commission is on that, or on that.
Yeah, but I'm saying, like, it would be great if it was just sent to us automatically.
And we can do that, it's happening, in some cases, it sounds like not all of you are getting it, so we will follow up on that and figure out why it's not.
I think that's a great solution, because like, well, I could put a reminder on my Apple calendar saying, every Monday when there's a, whatever, look at their agenda, but to have it come to us is important, the housing commission is like taking public comments on the draft, what is it, the pod program and all this, I mean, for the next, I wouldn't even know if somebody recently had it just notified me, so, yeah, they are, they are doing important things, and we should have an eye on it.
Do we flood the email boxes of the members of other commissions with agendas as well? I mean, is it just us, because you're doing it?
We've signed, we've signed all of you up for the PCD boards and commissions, so you should be getting PC, ARB, landmarks, zoning administrator, those are the.
Well, they're not getting, so, that's the issue.
But what I'm suggesting is, you know, some of these other commissions, you know, even Parks and Rec or whatever, you know.
We should force ourselves on them?
Yes. So they read it, and they say, oh my God, we should go and listen to that item because that affects us, we might want to speak on that, I think it's really, that's kind of what I'm looking for, is more interaction between them.
Okay, and Mario, and then Leslie.
Well, one thing that impressed me about this is that other boards and commissions have an advantage, because they can be very single-minded, you know, Parks and Recs can be all about open space, but we unfortunately have to make all the gears turn together, and if you look at that mission statement, every sentence in that conflicts with another sentence in it, and we have to resolve that conflict between those sentences, so it's more important that we hear from them in some ways, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, it's more important we hear from them to see where the collisions are coming from than they hear from us, although, please, they should get all the information they want, excuse me.
Right, but they should show up, I mean, I would love if more commissioners spoke before the planning commission on particular items, that would be fantastic.
I like.
Yes, sorry.
Leslie, and then Jason.
I just want to point out to Nina in particular, that another board, which she watches, the rent control board, because there's a surcharge policy just today that's coming Thursday, and they did some, took some action on January, which could affect historic preservation improvements to a property, so.
We'll talk about that offline.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Jason.
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest some kind of communication from us, from the chair, to all the commissions, saying that we welcome, you know, their input in whatever form, in whatever way, and if you see ways of articulating, you know, some ideas, the types of issues that you see intersecting with their work, to encourage it, and that we would like to know how we can help with their work.
Are you willing to do that?
I would do that shit, right.
Can I jump on that too?
Thank you, Jason.
I guess I would just say, I think that same, renewing that invitation, maybe each time we're working on a policy document, right, like I think about the DCP where Social Services Commission came and offered some suggestions, but, but housing didn't come, right, but it turned out they actually did have some suggestions, so like, that reminder to everybody that when we're working on a policy document, it would be good to get.
Great, thank you, thank you, yes.
One other input is like the external agency, so all the discussion here has been focused on what happens within the city, but the city's within Los Angeles, right, so Francie and I just got a notice on Thursday or something, for the EIR to begin work in LA for a dedicated light rail facility on Lincoln Boulevard, so that's going to connect, that's going to mash up with our bus lane, and, you know, our streetscape, so to what degree does the planning commission participate in providing comments to Caltrans, or whoever the, you know, DOT, so thinking outside of our bubble, where we connect to the larger region.
Great, thank you for that, okay, so can we now look more closely in on the relationship between the commission and the staff, and in some of the interviews I had with some of the commission members, I understand that you approve a project, and sometimes you don't know what the results are, or what happened with it, or where did it go, and Jing, do you have something you want to present in relation to this agenda item, and then we can talk about it, is that?
Sure, so, this was something that I think the discussion item was on the framework, but I just wanted to share, because I heard when you were forming this agenda, that you were kind of interested, you know, once the little duckling, you know, leaves the nest, what happens to it? A little fly, so, I just wanted to give you some selected examples of things that have happened, some long ago, some more recent, so this is a little quick little project outcome slideshow, and it's also in paper form in front of you, in case you can't see the screen, so, this one is 1613, 1637 Lincoln Boulevard, it's a housing project between Colorado and the freeway, very recently approved by the commission, just kind of late last fall, and this is what it looked like when it left you, and there were a number of design conditions that the planning commission imposed on it, there was a lot of discussion about the length of this facade, it was about 250 linear feet, I think, along Lincoln, you know, very, very large lot, and if you recall, it also skipped an alley that they would punch through, so it was kind of like in two parts, and, you know, so, but it was one of those where it was like, well, this is, you know, the massing is decent enough, they have this gap in the building, there's, they had set the building back, and this is good enough to move forward, so the design conditions that the commission put on this project were then given to the ARB, and with the ARB and Stephanie's good work, you know, it really transformed the project, and I just wanted to show the commission what it became, you know, same number of units, didn't lose any units in the project, but you can see what a redistribution of mass, and working with the ARB, you know, resulted in this project, so I think it was a very, very good outcome, and, you know, certainly the, what the commission identified in your comments, that really, I just want to, you know, that understanding that it really does help us, it gives staff sort of the leverage to work with the applicant, and helps the ARB understand, like, this is a major issue that, you know, we really want to make sure that they take that to heart, and it's not just, we suggest that you do this, so, that was a very good outcome, another one happened quite a long time ago.
Do we have opportunity here to talk about the details of these particular projects, or is that not?
Um, not really.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think, well, the outcome is.
You could talk about the outcomes.
I think the point, go ahead.
I didn't hear that, sorry.
I was just going to say, I think you could talk about the outcomes, you know, focus on the outcomes of these projects.
Okay, well, but looking at a specific project as a representation, so, you said that this changed, my memory of the conversation is that we, there were concerns about the massing, and some commissioners thought that it couldn't be achieved, that changes in the massing couldn't be achieved without a loss of units, but here you're saying that it actually was achieved at, within the ARB discussion, now technically, should the massing change at ARB?
I was going to say, this is something we can talk about, it's in the legal, because you posed that question in the legal section, so we'll have another opportunity, but, go ahead, Jing.
That would be in the next agenda item, right?
That would be next agenda item, but, yeah, go ahead.
And I'll just.
Is it really more about the purview of the ARB, I guess?
It is about the purview of the ARB, and how the planning commission functions in light of what the ARB's purview is, so for example, I, at least on the surface, this is the first time I've seen this rendering of the after, I think this is a significant improvement, but I'll raise the question of whether this significant improvement should be occurring at the PC level as opposed to at ARB, should the massing be resolved with us, and it goes to ARB for, you know, color?
So you're raising a process question. Yeah, yeah, so I think, I think a couple of things, one thing that the commission is bound by is the, is the Permanence Street Lining Act, right, and I think that when, when the time is up to act, you have to act, and that, that does serve as a constraint on the work of the commission, but it's something that state law requires so that these projects are moved through, and, you know, so, so you're making that judgment in terms of the findings with development agreement, obviously this was a housing project, so we have the Housing Accountability Act that jumps into it, and I don't want to get into that too much, because that's the next agenda item that Susan will talk about, but I hear what you're saying in terms of, you know, can the massing change, this, I, we're bringing these up because we want to show that it does, and it's possible, and it's not because the ARB says, you must do this, it's because, you know, they're providing feedback to the applicant, and then the applicant can choose to address that feedback in whatever manner they may desire, they didn't have to do this, they chose to do it, you know, given the, the conditions that were put forth in the comments that were made at the meeting, and maybe Stephanie was there, so she can add some more to that.
Yeah, I just want to really emphasize what Jing has said, that your conditions really help us as staff work with the developers.
help us as staff work with the developers that come before you to get the projects how you want them. And the ARB really appreciates those conditions because it gives all of us more leverage to work together to the same goal.
That's great. And I actually think it boils down to the legal question, which is what you're asking. And so we're going to address this again.
Okay. Can I just ask one more question just? So basically, what you're all saying is because we condition certain things, that is what's giving the ARB the ability to change massing with that.
They were conditioned as well.
So is that what?
It helps.
It helps. It helps. It helps as a, as a basis of like, here are the things that, you know, we should definitely look at when it, when it's looked at in design review.
Okay, Mario?
Well, so answering that question specifically, when we make these conditions, some of which are very vague, they work, use words like enhance this or that. In your experience, do you get the ammunition you need, or do you want more ammunition, i.e. more, more, either more items or more clearly defined directions? Give us some feedback on that.
Well, part of the reason that I'm attending the planning commission meetings is to have that basic understanding. And I have a, I always have a clear understanding of what you're going for because I've heard the conversation. And the ARB understands the conversation. And so because there is that really clear communication between the commission and the board.
It's okay if the word's bad.
It is actually better because then the development community embraces that and makes it their own. And that's really important to us, and that helps, helps the work happen and have the best outcomes.
Good, good question. And, but what I'm wondering is, does there need to be more back and forth information to you, Jason?
Yeah, on that exact point. To me, it's not perfectly clear whether, when the ARB is making its comments, or how those comments are being communicated to us in the float-up process, in the early concept review, whether the ARB is identifying the massing changes that it thinks the planning commission should make in order to produce an improved project like what, what they're suggesting. I hear, when I read the feedback, it has a lot, you know, there's discussion of things beyond massing. And I just, I would, I would find it helpful to hear from ARB specifically, a real focus on, on massing, so that when we're looking at it, we can provide that, those comments, and actually perhaps in, within, before approving a DRP, see those changes made in the, in the plans that are proposed.
That's really good feedback. Thank you.
Okay, so you're nod, Stephanie's nodding, Susan's nodding. And from the other comments I heard, other commission members would like that. So thank you, Jason. Any problem with that? Jing, any problem with that from staff?
No, no. And I think, yeah, we definitely endeavor to do that is the, and the commissions, or not the commission, the ARB's concept review, you know, they, because it was relatively new a few years ago, and I think that it's evolved, you know, in the way that they review the projects, the comments, the comfort level with what it is. And I think it's, it's just gotten better over time. So that's definitely feedback that will, that's helpful for us.
Great. Do you have other?
Yeah, I had just another one. This was the Broadway, the Sway Project at the corner of Sixth and Broadway. This was approved in 2011, actually. Just got it C of O last year, or maybe the year before that. And these are just photos, so you can see actually it's constructed. Massing, not so much different, but sort of difference in materiality. And certainly on the street level, this was one of the first projects in the downtown that we talked about residential on the ground floor, you know, just that concept of it. And you can see, you know, this is on the alley side that had a lot of discussion, and you know, just a difference in materials that can make in elevation. And here is just an example of what it is today, of some of this ground floor residential. We wanted to point this out because that's actually a key allowance, a policy in the DCP to have housing on the ground floor in certain areas within any of the village districts.
Mario has.
Specifically in this project, apart from the aesthetics, meaning we look at it, say we like it, we don't like it. How is that ground floor residential working? Will we have any feedback from that? Is there any kind of like, if tenants hate it, they would rather live anywhere but on the ground floor? Or no, they love it, they're on the stoop life? What do we know?
I haven't personally spoken to any of them, so.
Do we know any way to kind of dig a little deep around this?
We haven't heard anything.
They're always whole. I guess it's the right price, anybody?
The reason I'm saying that, it does seem that we have pushed for ground floor open uses in various, defined in various ways, and that is now colliding with the drying up of retail, if you will. And so if, if one of the solutions is to plug people in there, we want to make sure as a commission, answer one of the questions, what's really working for people? What's the, is there a way to tap into that so that we would be able to, if we wanted to go down that road?
Sure.
We would be doing it on solid footing as opposed to, oh, it'd be great to have more units, which is fine, but what are those units?
Well, Mario, this was, this, Jing, did you say this is, was 2011?
2011 was when it was approved, uh, sorry, it, yeah, when it was finally approved by the commission. It was actually submitted in 2006 before that. So it's quite a long road from.
Well, you know, Mario's question about feedback on people actually living in these developments or working in them or having shops in them is something that you as a commission, I'm just asking, is this something you as the commission want over time that is looking at something you approved or was approved by the commission five years ago, and now how are people feeling about living in it and asking staff to find out for you? Is that something you're wanting, or is that more than information that you want?
Those kids are having fun.
Much more fun than we are.
Well, I think it would be, I mean, and I don't know if it would ever make its way back to planning staff, but I would love to know if there is like an 80% vacancy rate in some place, or something weird that, you know, these, this just didn't work and, you know, the, I mean, maybe we'd hear about it in other ways because that developer who works here largely wouldn't do that again, but I don't know. But yeah, there were like big problems like that.
I will share like.
You may even hear of it, right?
Yeah, we haven't heard that, like, not the tenants themselves, but from the developers. And we, you know, they wouldn't build these units if no one was living in them, you know, because there's no financial interest in doing that. We certainly haven't heard pushback, quite frankly, from units anywhere in a building as to where it would not be acceptable, because any unit that they can put in a building, somebody for the right, as Amy's saying, for the right price, someone will live there.
Okay, good. So you answered Mario's question.
And I think we heard, you know, during the DCP, when the DNA showed up.
Yeah.
Talk about.
There's, yeah, for seniors.
Their experiences and the seniors. I mean, it comes through the, those policy discussions that we have about how people want to live. And to your point about the balconies, the internal space pushing the building out, I think that is good perspective. We probably cultivate some narrative, talking to people that we know that live in some of these buildings to bring back to you.
That would be great.
We'd like to know, you know, are we requiring the right elements?
Yeah, I mean, is, are they really, you know, I mean, there's also, just in terms of that whole well-being quality of life, you know, I think Santa Monica is an amazing place. We have beautiful air. We have different air, different sun, and that's part of what's great about living here. And are we effective in bringing that Santa Monica quality of life to these new buildings? Or is?
Yeah, certainly, like something that we, the discussion we've been having at a staff level based on projects that we're seeing and how people are choosing to address the livability and the open space and light and air in buildings, you know, we're really taking a hard look at how, you know, the, the minimum requirements we have in the code and whether we need to form that a little more because of some of the outcomes we're seeing, the literal outcomes of, I'm doing exactly 60 square feet here and exactly 900 square feet and, you know, but there's no other sort of shape around it. You know, whether we want to be that prescriptive or are there other ways that we can encourage, you know, the goals that we need? So that was very, very good feedback. So that's, that's from a design perspective. I wanted to share with the commission some of the advocacy that you have provided in terms of streets. This is just one example. On the Pennsylvania Avenue, which is the one-way segment between 26th and Stewart and within the Bergamot Area Plan, it's slated to become a two-way street there. And we just wanted to show some of the progress that's being made, like a sidewalk, is, you know, where there wasn't one before. And I think Francie probably has more information about the progress of turning that into a two-way street. But this was some early advocacy from the commission that was in the area plan and is just starting, you know, that implementation piece now. So, you know, that was a good outcome, you know, based on the commission's input. Early plan implementation, this was another housing project downtown on Second Street, the ground floor. This, the commission actually gave a lot of good feedback. This was one that had some pillars that came out to the sidewalk. It didn't quite comport with our long-term vision of kind of having more pedestrian throughway in the downtown. And this was before the downtown community plan was adopted. And so in this case, you know, there was advocacy through the development agreement process for that ground floor building setback and active uses on the ground floor, and it's turned out very nicely for this project. And this is just a, you know, to give you a sense of, you know, what that looks like and what we can expect to see elsewhere in the downtown as the redevelopment occurs with these sorts of housing projects. In the Bergamot area, this is, might be one of the last office buildings you see, I don't know, in, in that area. But I pointed this out because, again, this was pre-Bergamot Area Plan adoption, but that punch through of Pennsylvania Avenue to Stanford, you know, that is being implemented through this particular project here. And on the other side of that, the Millennium East Village project under construction now is coming from the other way, and then that middle piece. So, you know, who knows, in, you know, 10, 20 years, we'll see the completion of that street come through and cut through that super block and the creative arts use that will be in that building, again, implementing the Bergamot Area Plan. You know, these decisions were made before the adoption happened, but again, looking forward as to the goal that you wanted to achieve and some of the outcome there. And then the last thing was sort of like the private market response to policy. I'm only pointing this out because it was on Wilshire Boulevard where we do have Tier Two allowed, but we also allow for Tier One projects up to 15,000 square feet. This is an example of one of those projects on a site that had a mixed housing project approved some time ago. The owner didn't move forward with it, so they're moving forward with kind of like a fast casual, two-story commercial retail building. And, you know, we are seeing definitely projects like this coming forward because of the perceptions of difficulty, you know, of achieving projects that have to go through a public hearing, whether it be housing or otherwise. And I just thought that was helpful to point out because it is a very real thing that's happening, whether it's here or also in the Bergamot area, you know, given some of the limitations that are put in there with respect to height and FAR that, you know, that there is a, this is some of the stuff that, you know, we're seeing an immediate response, but, you know, years down, you know, you start to see the effects of some of those decisions that are made. So that's.
Final answer question.
All I have.
Oh, I just think that's pretty outrageous.
Yeah.
It's economics.
It's, but, yeah. But we also talked, but I mean, we recently had a discussion about, I would have loved, I mean, we recently had a discussion about telling the council that they could look at the, you know, housing issues on the boulevards. And I'm glad that we communicated that to them because.
It's fit.
It's on there. They think it's fit. Well, so I hope they saw this and heard this when they were having that discussion.
Yeah, I would just ask, you know, maybe that you could, just in the director's report
even, say we had three Tier Two, you know, Tier One projects coming through that got administrative approval. I mean, I would like to know, you know, I'm not following, I don't even know how we could follow that unless we feel that's known. I mean, it would be good to know if this is the one or if you actually have a bunch of them coming through or how big an issue it is.
Okay, any other comments?
That's all I had, so.
By the way, I love this comparison. This is really valuable.
It is.
Again, some feedback because it's so rare.
Thanks, Jing.
So Mario, did you want to make a recommendation? You're saying the feedback's rare.
No, I don't want that just yet, but it's nice to get.
Okay, great. Anything else? Any other comments? Thank yous.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask, just as a warning before we break after we have the next agenda item, I'm going to ask each of you to say one thing you'd like going forward, one wish you have for where do we go next, or where, where are you going to go down the road? So just keep that in mind. Anything else about what you want from staff, or how you want to relate to staff, or any interaction that you want to see in the future?
If, if as time goes on, any more of these crop up, and you can, even if it only takes, you know, three minutes, you know, at the end of a meeting or something that you present, I, this was, this is really great information and definitely provides food for plots. Thank you.
Yeah, sometimes it takes a while because.
Because it takes a while.
I mean, that was from 2000.
Right.
So like five years later, you know, hopefully it's the same question. We'd be happy to, yeah, provide this information when things get.
Thank you. Good, okay. So the final agenda item before we look at the future for, very briefly, before we break and have lunch, that's going to encourage us with this last item, is the discussion with Susan and to talk about the city attorney on questions of legal process.
So you want to start that before lunch?
Maybe we should.
It's going to take a while.
Maybe we should bring it now.
Yes, before lunch. Let's do, let's complete the agenda. It's going to take a while.
Yeah, I mean, this is a big discussion, so maybe we should have a quick lunch.
Oh, okay, whatever you got, yeah. Okay, so we're going to reconvene and I asked Susan during the break if she would get us started on this last agenda item regarding city attorney and questions of legal process. So, and is there any problem with our recording this?
No.
We have to record. Okay. So again, this is an opportunity for you to ask whatever questions you want to ask, but there's three handouts. One of them is.
Can I make that point? You know, we have empty chairs, so it'd be nice if.
You want to shift down?
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you, Mario. So that'll be easier to hear you, you know, centered thing. Thank you. Let's, before we start, let's thank our caregiver for a delicious lunch.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. For taking such good care of us.
Thank you. So three handouts. One of the handouts is called Legal Standards Review. The second handout is the Housing Accountability, Housing Accountability Act Decision Tree. And then the third one is, it's just, basically Jason had sent me some questions, so I just made copies for everybody because I thought it would be good for us to work through them after dealing with the first two handouts. So again, this is, this is your opportunity to ask whatever it is you want to ask. And it was a good refresher because it forced me to go back to kind of seminal case law on administrative decisions. And the case is Topanga Association versus, Topanga Association for Ascetic Community, Excuse me, Ascetic Community versus County of Los Angeles. It's a 1974 case, and it had to do with the fact that in Topanga Canyon, somebody had proposed a development, and it was 26 acres for a 93-home mobile home park. And so what happened was, at the time, there was no definitive case law on what kind of findings, if any, do you have to make in the record in order to make a decision? So what the, this is a California Supreme Court case, and what the court did is it went through the then current body of case law, and it basically came up with some principles which are still, you know, still the principles that hold today, although, you know, as happens in case law, things change based upon facts, like bad facts make new case law. So I wanted to talk about this case and just some of the things that I think are takeaways from this case, so you remember what is, and by the way, this is about a variance, so it plays into some of the questions that Jason had asked about the findings were variance. But one of the most seminal statements that the court made is that you have to make findings. Before, you could make a decision, but it wasn't clear whether you had to make findings or not. But this case said, no, you have to make findings. And the reason for that is if this, if your decision is challenged and it goes to court, it's usually by writ of mandamus. And so what this is about is establishing your thinking and sort of saying, you know, how did you get to this process?
Excuse me, question first. What is a writ of mandamus?
A writ of mandamus is exactly that. It's a writ which basically asks the court to order something to happen. So if you're, you're an administrative body, it's a planning commission, you make a decision, it's called a quasi-judicial decision. If somebody challenges it, they go to court, and basically what they ask for is the court to issue an order to you directing you to do one thing or the other. So if they disagree with your decision, the order of the court is to set aside your decision. So that's, that's, that's really how this all started. In other words, you have to make findings so that the reviewing court can follow your train of thought. So the other takeaway from this is that what's, what's the standard of review? It's called the substantial evidence standard. We've probably heard about this many times, but this is where it came from. And basically, it just says in making these determinations, the reviewing court, excuse me, we conclude that when called upon to scrutinize a grant of a variance, a reviewing court must determine whether substantial evidence supports the findings of the administrative board. So basically, it's, you, how do, you have facts that are presented to you, and so you have to make a decision based upon those facts. And they call that the substantial evidence standard, right? So it's the evidence which gets you to the findings. And this is a very deferential standard, which means that the adminis, whoever is going to review your decision, they're not remaking the law. The law has been made, so the question is, did you apply the law in order to come up with your decision? And so that's, again, it's a deferential standard in that you don't have to, it's not like a jury at this point where you look at all the evidence and then you have to say objectively, is there more evidence which shows, you know, 51% more evidence than not? No, it's, it's, it's a deferential standard, which means that, did you look at all the evidence? Did you take that into account? And is there a logical, is there a logical train of thought between the evidence and your decision? And it's, it's a deferential standard. So that means that if somebody's going to challenge it, you do not, we do not have the burden of proof. It's whoever is challenging it has the burden of proof to show that it was unreasonable or you didn't follow, you didn't follow the process. So if you have any questions, feel free to stop me because, you know, in my own head, I'm reading this and it's something that I've digested many times and have to, you know, regurgitate and relearn it frankly, because it comes up often.
Thank you, Susan. Mario, and then Les.
So in terms of the findings, the findings we have to make are all in the code for the different pieces, for the variance, for landmark, whatever, whatever the issue is, they're listed there.
That's right.
And those are the only findings that need to be made. There's no other...
Right. And that's, that's right, because that's, that's the law. So the law is the local code. And at the time that this case came down, there were some cities that didn't have findings and some cities that did. So basically, what you see is a codification of the findings that the legis, your local body, our local body, has put into the code, which says that in order for you to approve a variance, you have to make these findings. But the findings that are in the code are, are generic findings. In other words, you still have to make the findings that bridge the gap between the evidence that's provided at the hearings and linking them to how you arrived at those findings. So it's, you can't just regurgitate the findings. You have to say, okay, here are the facts that I, that came before us, whether it's in the staff report or somebody presented it at the hearings, and therefore those facts support these findings. And staff does a good job, I think they do a good job, of putting it together for you because they, they try to holistically look at the project, and usually it is very fact-intensive, and it's like 30 pages now, right? The staff reports are getting longer and longer and longer, but the bottom line is they try to frame it for you to make it a little easier for you to digest, but that's not to say that you rely solely on what staff presents to you, and that'll, that'll be the next thing that we talk about.
Okay. Sorry, Les, they get something too.
If our findings are based on facts, quote unquote, that are subjective, how does a court deal with that?
Well, we're going to get to that next point.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jason.
When denied a project, do the finding, the reason that you can't make the gap, does that need to be expressed?
I think it should be expressed on the record. In some cases, the code specifically says if you can't, if you can't make the finding, you should statewide. And so, but I do think it's good practice for you to put on the record why it is you do not agree or you couldn't make the finding, because if somebody challenges that, they could say, well, you didn't think about, you didn't think about it and go through the process. So you really want to establish that you went through the process to try to make the findings, and if you couldn't make the finding, it's because this fact did not support the finding. So it's, again, it goes back to how you juggled the facts with the finding.
Okay. Go ahead.
So as I, I stated earlier that it's somewhat subjective, and the reason why I said that is because the burden of proof is on the opponent to show that what you did was incorrect. Now, here's where there is some objectiveness. It says, the takeaway is you need to show your thinking as to how you arrived at it. And so a court does look at whether you made logical, you know, you drew logical conclusions from the facts. So in that way, it's still somewhat objective to a certain point, and this is where bad facts make bad law, because sometimes, you know, the decision makers have a certain thing in mind, but maybe it doesn't jive with the whole, all the circumstances, all the facts that are presented. So, so what that means is that you should at least take into account all of the facts that have been presented. So if you have 50% that say, yes, we support the project, 50% that says, no, we don't support the project, you should try to articulate why it is you think that the facts that support the project, if that's your decision, is overrides the facts that don't support the project. Do you understand what I'm saying? So you sort of lay out, I didn't ignore the facts that were against my position, but I think that this factor weighs for, because of such and such facts. So again, it's not to, it's not to second guess you. The court will not second guess you. What they're supposed to do is be deferential to your, your ultimate decision as long as it is based upon rational thinking and connecting the facts to this, to the findings.
Any, any questions about that? Great. Thanks, Susan. Keep going.
So I think we breeze through to the second page.
On the back of this first page?
Yeah. So this is interesting. So this gets to what, what is required for a variance, and this was an interesting case because the court talked about what it is you can look at in making, in granting or not granting a variance. And in this instance, what happened was when they took, when they took the project to the planning commission, the planning commission focused on the, the project itself, like, okay, the project is good because it's going to provide housing, and therefore it will afford more housing opportunities, or the project is good because it's going to provide more open space. And the Supreme Court said, well, that's all very nice, but really that has nothing to do with a variance, because what, what has to do with a variance is the difference between your project and all the other properties who are similarly situated. So it's really a relative, it's really a relative inquiry, so that the purpose of the variance is to basically equalize your position. So if you buy a property and it's either on a steep hillside or there's something unique about it, which puts you at a disadvantage when you want to build, let's say, a resident, a single-family residence in a single-family residential neighborhood, the purpose of the variance is to equalize your position so that you're not entirely disadvantaged. And so court said, you know what? Those things are nice, but the reality is all these other people have built their single-family residences and they have similar problems on steep hillsides and whatnot. Therefore, no, the planning commission did not make the right finding, and it was abuse of discretion, and said, no, it's not good. So this case is good for two things. One is it really talks about what are the administrative, what's the process by which you make your decision? And then it focused on what do you look at when you're granting a variance? And the other thing that the court noted is that if you have too many projects in the same neighborhood that are getting variances, well, you know, maybe it's a time to change. It's a legislative decision. Instead of using a variance in order to make a legislative change, you should, you know, you should change the code. So that's...
Too much? What is, did they articulate what, like, what, at what point there needs to be a change in code considered?
Um, no. And that's, that's, that's what you have to understand about the law in that there's no black and white answer, and you may be frustrated because I can't say there's a right answer and there's a wrong answer. It's not that. What it is, is did you make a reasoned analysis and come to an answer? So in some situations, it may be the case where you look at the entire neighborhood, and then in other cases, you look at the properties that are directly around, but whatever criteria you, you look at, you have to articulate why it is you think that connects to the findings of the variance.
But when the court say that if you're getting too many variances, then you need to consider legislative solution.
Right.
Is there any guidance from the courts on...
No. Not really. I mean, I mean, that was more dicta, so it just means that, you know, by the way, we're not, they're not making a holding or they're not issuing an opinion on that very issue, but they're saying, by the way, if you have so many variances, you really, it's not really a variance that's appropriate.
Okay. Mario, and Les, this is a question for staff. Are there any areas in our city where we're getting a, it's a, it's a variance factory and we need to maybe consider a response to the... Jean, did you want to...
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we, and I think, as Susan is saying, it's maybe not so much a legal standard as sort of a, hey, you know, it seems like we've issued a variance for more than 50% of the properties or every single project that comes through, whether it's new construction or additions, just can't seem to make it work. Or you have absurd results, you know, where the only way to get out of second floor is if it was five feet wide because the setbacks are too great. That's signaling to us that something might be wrong with the standards, and we've seen that happen in some sections of, near the southern city border, whether it be on hillsides or some very, very narrow lots where they're 25 feet wide. I think we've raised this issue before, of, you know, we probably need to look at some different way to address those kinds of situations.
Bucket three? I mean, what are we talking about?
It is. Yeah, it is a bucket three. It's an R1 comment.
I see you wanted a comment.
Yeah. My question is, what happens if you have a property, for example, at the beach, and it has a slope, and the slope is worse than anything in an immediate area, and the use is different from that proposed, the proposed use is different from everything around it? How would you look at a variance situation for that?
Well, the variance code basically says you can't use a variance for a change in use, so...
No, no, no. No, no, it's an allowed use.
A slow, but it needs a variance. Okay. Well, that gets to the next case that I was going to talk about.
You two are playing it right.
So, you know, I told you about, you know, the seminal cases, this California Supreme Court case in 1974. And so what happens over time, and this is why no attorney, I believe, can actually say there's a right answer and there's a wrong answer, because it really comes down to who can articulate good policy in order to get the court to consider it as what they're saying. So in Topanga, what the court said is, you don't look at the innate character of the property to determine whether a variance is warranted. You look at how that property compares to how the other properties are situated, and basically, you just want to equalize the playing field, and that's all you're doing. This case, which I'm going to talk about, is Escalin versus City of Del Mar. So this is very similar. This may sound familiar to you, but basically, this was a, it's a set of properties that were on a slope, right? So, and the slope, the, the street that was adjacent, that abutted these properties was kind of a C street, right? And so what happened was, there was one property owner who had a non-conforming use because, a non-conforming setback, so the setback was 20 feet and his property was nine feet, and that's because there was a hillside here, and so when it was built, it was already nine feet. And so when they changed the code to 20 feet, he had the non-conforming rights. So then he said, well, you know what? I want to change my, I want to build a new house. And so he wanted to build a new house with the same setback, which is the nine foot. And the other property owners, they said, no, you can't do that because, you know, then you're using a variance procedure to get out of your non-conforming rights. Anyway, what happened was, the court said, once the owner decided that he was going to raise the house and build a new house, non-conforming rights don't lay into it anymore. And so he just needed a variance in order to get out of the 20-foot setback. So in this case, the court did, first it looked at all the R1 properties. So that's the first place that you start. You look at the zone and you see how all the properties are situated and see if there's something unique. So in this instance, yes, it was unique because there were only, you know, maybe 10% of the R1 properties in the city that were on this type of a slope. Then what this court did is it looked at, within those 10%, how did those other property owners deal with this problem? And so what they found is that he did have, he did have, this particular property owner did have some unique circumstances in that he did not want to build closer to the, to the slope, right? Because then he would have to grade more, it would interfere with other people's views. And also, the court found that in this circumstance, his having to spend more money solely to address the setback issue was considered as a hardship. So the bottom line of all this is that unlike this court in Topanga Canyon, the court did consider sort of the innate characteristics of this particular property. So what is the moral of the story here? The moral of the story is, I go back to the subject, the substantial evidence rule. Whatever decision you make, there's no right or wrong decision. It's just what are the facts before you and did you make that reasoned determination? Because there is no black and white law which says it has to be this way or it has to be that way. All right. Wish it would be easier, but it's not.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
All right. So the good news is that this is the same standard for CUPs, and I would say it's the same legal standard for, well, we're going to talk about the development review permit process, but the CUP is the same thing. So it's a substantial evidence standard. And so the only thing that I added to this is, because it comes up often, many of you ask, well, what kind of conditions can I impose? And so what I did is I just highlighted certain categories to make sure that you follow these basic rules, right? So one of them is a government code section. Now, this government code section technically doesn't apply because you're, we're a charter city. But many times, what's in the state code is kind of a codification of what the case law is. And so what this government code section is saying is that you can't require somebody to give up their land as a condition to approving something. And so this is kind of the Nolan, you've heard about Nolan, don't, this is, this is the long list lines. And then the other one is, you can't require them to post a guarantee if they have to build public improvements. Not sure what that's about because it doesn't come up that often, but, so that's one category, right? What unreasonable permit conditions? And then we have R code. R code is actually a little broader, so it says that you can oppose any conditions that are relating to, you know, conform to the site plan, architectural drawings, statements submitted in the report of the, in support of the application, so that's many times...
Can I go back to B? This posting of the bond guaranteeing public improvements? If you can't make that a condition of approval, what is the other mechanism that financially ensures that the street widening happens or whatever the sewer, whatever is the public improvement? What's the link there? If you've given up a bond, what's the, how does that work?
Well, then you'd have normal remedies, like we'd have to file a lawsuit saying you didn't comply with your condition. This was just about posting a bond.
And we also review, like, prior to issuance of CBO, there are other triggers in the entire process.
And also the subdivision map act. Yeah. The subdivision map act does allow you to post, does allow you to require them to post a bond. So it really depends on what the type of development is. Like, it's usually in the context of the subdivision that you would require this kind of infrastructure versus a CUP, which is just about...
It has to do with reasonably related to the permit. So a CUP is for a use, you know, and typically it's an existing building maybe.
Right.
So, you know, it's really the relationship of an off-site improvement to a use, that's a pretty tenuous, probably nonexistent relationship there.
Okay. The mitigation...
Wait, wait, wait. I'm still, I'm, I think I'm not quite following at least this language here. In A, so you're, it says here, no governmental body shall give a CUP or a per, a use permit or a zone variance if it's a dedication of the land for purpose not reasonably related to the use of the property of which the variance is requested. So we can't give other variances if the use isn't allowed?
So, don't let this confuse you. This is a generic section, which... This is a generic section, which just talks about permit conditions, and they're speaking generically about any type of permit. So I think it's, this is just to say that whatever permit comes before you, you can't impose this unreasonable condition. This is not specifically about conditional use permits.
I see, okay.
So it's just, it's a generic section.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Because we're a charter city necessarily.
It doesn't, but the principle applies that we can, yeah, require dedication. Then we have the mitigation fee act, which is also something that we have to think about. And that has to do with imposing monetary exactions as conditions of development. But for the most part, the city has addressed that by doing their NEXA study, incorporating their fees into, you know, codifying them. So they already go through this process.
Has that ever been challenged or something?
It has not, no. The city does a really good job. They're very thorough. This guy's a very thorough one.
So the longer that train runs, the more solid it becomes because there's established, it builds up its own momentum.
Yeah. I mean, theoretically, the city should update its fees periodically because things may change and the assumptions may change. But overall, usually a lot of that, there's a lot of cushions built into the, cushioned assumptions built into the fees. All right, and the last one, I know this may frustrate you the most, but this has to do with health and safety code provision, which basically says that cities can't impose stricter building requirements or green building requirements. And the law, by the way, was changed to add the word green building requirements in subsection B. So it's basically saying that if the city wants to adopt stricter standards, they can do so, but it has to go through this public process in order to justify why there are unique circumstances which would merit imposing stricter conditions.
No question.
Stricter than the code?
Yeah. This is not, this is not related to the green part of building code. An issue that we've been discussing is whether or not bedrooms should be allowed without windows? If that isn't the state building code, I don't know if it is or not, can we change it locally, or would the state subsume our authority to do that?
We actually did some research with the building and safety, we're the building official on that issue. I'd be happy to update the commission.
Okay, great.
On what that is, because it is, it actually is allowed by the building code in certain circumstances and building types.
And just my question is, if it's in the state building code, does that take away our authority to say you can't do it? And if somebody comes into the counter and says, well, the state says they can, and you said they can't, it's like the ADU thing?
That's basically what Susan is, yeah, is, this is about green building, but in general, where the city wants to be more strict or different than what the building code allows, we have to establish typically like local findings.
Yeah.
Which is what we've done actually for a lot of our green building stuff, our Chapter Eight, stuff to do with green building and modern neutrality, is we actually did adopt local findings. And I went through this longer, long process with the state and the building code association or something like that.
Jane, when you said update the commission, there was some nods. People want that, so. On that particular issue?
On that particular, yeah, that, right, okay.
So now we get to our favorite topic, and, sorry, Richard's not here because he's been promoting this for a long time. But we have the Housing Accountability Act and some of the recent changes. So I'm just going to talk about the recent changes. But before I get there, I want you to look at your flow chart. And so what this is intended to do is, is a cheat sheet for you to understand that the Housing Accountability Act first asks whether something, a project complies with objective standards. And if it does comply with objective standards, before you reduce, you impose conditions or you deny the project, then you have to make certain findings that are adverse circumstances, which basically would warrant either the conditions or denying the project. And they have to be health and safety related. But sometimes what happens is, you get a project, and it's, it's a package with a variance or a waiver. And so what I tried to explain to you before, maybe not so well, but hopefully this is laid out more clearly, is that you have to go through the process of the variance, the modification of the waiver first, because you do not have to comply with the Housing Accountability Act since those are not, what it means is that the project has not met the objective criteria. But if you do grant either the variance or the modification, then you're back to, they complied with the objective standards that the court, that the code has allowed you to make findings on. And so hopefully this helps.
Question to figure that out. I think, I worry that this, and not for us, I mean, for other cities and counties, this is meant to address, that this could be used in a sort of backhanded way to kill housing projects. And how would, that they're going to not give the variance, the modification, whatever, as a way not to have the housing built? I'm not talking about Santa Monica, but is that word ever happening? What would the state think about that?
So I don't know what the state would think about it, but again, this goes to substantial evidence and the findings that you make. So if the findings that you make for a variance, for example, have nothing to do with the actual findings that you need to make with the variance, then I think it's arguable that you basically abused your discretion, and therefore that would be, you know, somebody would challenge you, and you'd have to justify why it is you used the variance in order to deny a project. So again, I think it's substantial evidence, and I do think that some developers may call you out on that.
I know they won't. Do you want to make your comment?
I do. So if for some reason, we don't want to grant the variance because we don't think that they need the variance or that it qualifies for the variance, then our job would be to send them back and try to figure it out without the variance? I mean, what if we really don't like the variance?
Well, you have, under the permit streamlining act, you have to make decisions.
Yeah, but if we, if the variance, if they are really just asking for an unreasonable variance that we don't want to grant.
Well, then what you should do is, you should make the findings to deny the project based upon substantial evidence standard, and then they will definitely come back to you.
Right, so we could.
With a different project, basically. They can't come back with the same project. They have to come back with a new project. But it's up to them to figure out what project they're going to come back with. It's just your job to either approve or deny the project.
So Susan, does it speak to the importance of, like, sometimes you might, so in, to meet, speaking of Nina's example, there might be a project that maybe, if maybe it's a housing project, they come forward with a variance and a development review permit. And it speaks to the importance of considering each of those permits on their own merit and not to merge it into, do we like the project as a whole?
Exactly.
Right? It's like, number one, do you agree that this variance is even, you know, that you would like to authorize this variance? And that's step one, before you even talk about the development review permit.
And you try to facilitate that by breaking out each of the decisions. So it may seem cumbersome to you, but you're going to have to decide on the variance or the modification first, and then make your decisions on the.
And you'll keep us in line, because sometimes we tend to aggregate stuff.
You do. I mean, I think for purposes of flow, we like, you know, make the stack presentation unified, and then when it comes to the actual decision making, we'll have to clarify in the record what decision you're making, what findings you're making for that decision, and just jump through those.
So if, it's, is it consistent with the streamlining if we realize that a variance isn't, we don't think a certain variance is going to be appropriate? Can we still, like, give them an option? Do you want us to deny this variance, or do you want to come back? Is that like something we should do?
So the applicant has the, you have the ability to negotiate one 90-day extension, right? And then, other than that, the applicant either can force you to make a decision and then appeal, or decide to withdraw the project.
I see. So we should, if, it looks like we're not going to support a variance, it's probably a good idea to give them that option before we vote.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think staff does that, actually. You guys typically talk to them.
We do. If we do, if we know we're going to recommend denial of a project, the applicant will always know ahead of time that we, that staff is not supportive of that permit. And we give them all opportunity to work with us on trying to find a way to make it work or something that we can support.
Right.
But, you know, there are moments where applicants say, you know, no, I just, I would like the commission, I would like my opportunity to hearing, and that's obviously, that's due process, and, you know, they have to be allowed that. But, yeah, it is good practice if the commission feels like, you know, you're moving towards denial, and there's the option for the extensions, to ask the applicant, would you be willing to, you know, consider, you know, an extension, to think about everything you've heard tonight, and come back, you know, do a different proposal? And again, you know, that's, they can decide whether they want to do that or not, or they could say, no, you know, your time's up, we would rather like your decision, and take our chances with an appeal.
So we are, let me just, we're about 15 minutes before breaking, so I just want to make sure, Susan, if there's anything crucial you need to let the commission know about, and comments, let's have comments too. Leslie? Okay, I have a question. We had a project recently on Lincoln, the big glass building that nobody liked but me. And, but it was, it was code compliant, as I recall, if that's the one?
We should probably not talk to.
Okay, I won't talk about that, but let's just, the theoretical project. In order to deny a housing project, it has to be based on objective criteria in the zoning code, in the zoning code. Mass and bulk are not objective criteria. So how do we deal with what we deal with knowing that?
So I'm going to get to that.
Um, all right.
I will, I will address that. The other thing that I wanted to mention about the Housing Accountability Act is, they changed the standard of review to preponderance of evidence on the record. Now, this is sort of a Frankenstein standard, because preponderance of the evidence, which is on the next page, it's not defined in the law. What it is, is preponderance of the evidence, and I, what I did is I reproduced the jury instruction.
Where is it again?
It's on page five, but.
Last page.
So basically, it says, you have to look at all the evidence, and basically, 51% of it objectively said, you know, can prove a point, then they've proved the point. It's an objective standard, and what it does is it shifts the burden so that if somebody wants to challenge your decision, you have to show that you met the preponderance of the evidence standard. So it really is somewhat of a game changer in that if you make your decisions, you really have to ensure that it's based on a tougher standard. And so what that means is that you have to take all of the evidence into account. So, you know, even if you have a certain preference for something, basically, you have to take everything and weigh equally and say objectively, does this meet the requirement? And this is, this has to do with the adverse, the findings of adversity. So that's, that's something else that's, that's new in law. So that, that's the end of that, and then I thought we'd deal with Jason's questions.
Well, if you could just briefly before moving on, can you illustrate to us what kinds of findings would need to be made to show adversity?
Typically, you know, it's health, safety, so it would have to be health effect, I think, or something along the lines of, it would be almost amounting to a nuisance where you've been causing a problem that would impact, you know, tangibly, somebody in some context, and, you know, it's hard to.
Like unsafe driveway condition or what?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's funny, because we haven't actually had any circumstance that I can think of that really presents that problem, which is exactly what this law is intended to do. It's basically to make a very, make it very tough for you to come up and say that this housing project should be denied because if it's granted, it's going to do X, Y, and Z. So it's hard for me to actually think of a situation in which you could make this finding.
I don't think, I don't think a city has made a finding like that that held up.
Yeah, to legal challenge.
That would work.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Can I just build on that really quickly? So if the, just like devil's advocate, if the planning commission were going in that direction, and is it your job to say, hey, planning commission, stop? I'm not, I'm not comfortable, or I'm not really feeling you're doing that? Or is it your job just to give us this information and let the planning commission make the decision regardless, because you're not the final arbiter of what we decide ultimately vote on?
That's right. So I have exactly that. I don't want to weigh into the decision. It's ultimately up to you. I can tell you what the standard is, but the final decision is really your decision.
Jane, did you want to comment on that in terms of staff role?
You know, I, I think that when we make our staff recommendation, we always, like I said, present, you know, our best recommendation, you know, on that. And if, if we genuinely leave a staff that there is a specific adverse health or safety impact, we will state that in the record and provide the commission that information, you know, for you to, to decide upon. If it's, you know, we don't believe that it's present, you know, then we, that information will not, that evidence, you know, that will not be made to support a finding. So, you know, like I said, it's been, it's not been in my experience, as long as I've been a planner, that I've ever come across that kind of a situation where there was a housing project that resulted in a adverse health and safety finding. And that would take a little bit of research.
Susan, you want to comment on what Jason's question was, or did you hand it back?
No, I mean, the only thing I was going to add is that, again, you, you should consider all the evidence, not just what's in the staff report, because many times, if there was an issue of adverse impact, somebody in the audience is going to raise it. And so it's kind of up to you to say whether objectively you think that really is an adverse impact or not. But even, even so, I don't think we've had one instance where someone has come up and said there's an adverse.
Yeah, Leslie, you. I just have some concern. I mean, if we're going down, we're like babes in the woods making these findings, and you think we're not going to be able to substantiate them out in the real world, I would expect some input from you about that, just to save everybody time and money.
Right, except that, again, ultimately, you guys are the decision makers, that's why you get the big bucks. What I, what I could do is.
A little bucks.
I can give you guidance on what the standard is. If you ask me point blank, I'll answer the question. However, I think you need to be careful about what, if you ask me something, then you're asking me to answer it, and it's going to be on the record, right? So I just think you have to be careful. And ultimately, you know, I'm not the decision maker. You guys are the decision makers, so it's.
But you're the lawyer.
I'm the lawyer, but I can tell you what the law is, but I can't tell you what to do with it. That's ultimately your.
Thank you. That's good perspective. So, anything else, Susan?
Well, Jason put together a list of questions, and I thought to the extent we had, we have seven minutes, and maybe we can run down these questions, see how far we get. So question one is, is an applicant's hardship an appropriate consideration in a CUP? And I'm asking these questions, and please feel free to provide your own input, but I don't think it does because it's not in the findings. So what a CUP is about is really compatibility with the surrounding uses. Number two, so what do courts look to when assessing a project's approval, approvals consistency with a general plan? There is a whole body of case law about this, but generally, what it is, is you have to be compatible with objectives, policies, general land uses, and programs. So what that means is that sometimes there may be a technical difference, but courts will not really split the hair as long as ultimately, it comports with your objective and your policy as stated in the plan. And that's because they understand plans are in effect for, you know, 30 years, and therefore, there may be some small changes, but ultimately, as long as you comply with or consistent with the big picture items, that's enough. All right, then there are several questions, which I think we can skip three because we talked about the variance. What is compatible? Again, I go back to the substantial evidence standard. In other words, whether you think a use is compatible is sort of the ultimate question in a CUP. Do you think it's compatible? And therefore, you have to, you have to look at the facts that are presented to you and make your determination as to whether it's compatible or not. So obviously, if there's a health issue, or, you know, if you have a commercial use in a residential zone, that's the easiest thing. There may be some very objective factors which would make it not compatible with the surrounding use, and so.
No question.
Yes.
Isn't there an assumption by virtue of it's being an allowed land use, that there's some compatibility? That you oppose conditions to make it even more compatible?
Well, I think we're, are we talking about, I'm talking about conditional use.
I know you are, but the conditional use permit is for a use that is allowed with conditions.
Right. So I think certain assumptions have to be made. That's right, but still, you still have to find in that circumstance. And again, it comes down to the facts, whether those assumptions.
It would come back in.
DRP too, right?
Yeah, and in CUPs, I mean, for all practical purposes, you know, how we would look at it is like, are there no conditions that could make this, this, this particular proposal for a use, you know, compatible with, around it in terms of use, operation, potential impacts? Like, is it something that is just, we just, we really don't think that it's going to work? You know, in that case, that that might be sort of, you know, a trigger or a sort of tipping point. But, you know, I think Leslie's correct, that there is some assumption that it's permitted, and, you know, what conditions can make this compatible?
Right, right.
So Jason, is there a burning, one last question on there that you really need?
You know, there's actually two that I'm going to get to. So the Housing Accountability Act basically says that you can't impose a condition that lowers density. lowers density. This definition is lower density includes any conditions that have the same effect or impact on the ability of the project to provide housing. That's a very broad definition. So I think arguably that could mean feasibility and we'd have to, you know, you'd have to look at the circumstances that are presented to you, but it's very broad. So what I wanted to tell you is it doesn't necessarily mean just reducing the number of units. It could mean, it could mean reducing size to the, to the impact that the, it's not feasible anymore.
So you're saying not necessarily number of units, but feasibility overall is the greater.
I, I think there's some question about this because it is so broadly worded. I, I think we have to see how this actually plays out in case law. Because sometimes what happens is, you know, just when, when a legislature adopts a statute, it's a compromise based upon various interests and they don't actually flesh out all the detail. And so it's very broadly worded. And so what that means is that it's going to probably happen through case law, which defines what this actually means. So I'm just, what I'm saying is that there's no black and white answer as to what this means. What I suggest to you is that you work with whatever experts you want to work with to come up with what you think the criteria should be for lowering density, whether it's, you know, reducing the number of units or changing the product in a way that makes it less feasible. These are some of the things that I think you could explore and maybe adopt some policy criteria to help you have kind of a standardized way of looking at when you think something is lowering density.
So that goes on a future agenda.
Yeah.
For you all to discuss.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, two things. I think it's interesting that you're saying, you know, it's very broad. Okay, I get that. Could mean feasibility. But then my question to myself is then, well, how can we take into, into account feasibility when we can't take into account feasibility? I mean, because there, especially during the process, I mean, and during the process, for example, when we are interacting with an applicant and we say to them, well, look, we have perhaps issues of massing and density which are separate to an extent. And then it's really up to them to determine whether or not it's feasible and whether or not it's going to impact these things. And we don't know until they either come back or unless we take them at their word, well, actually, we've already had five different variations of this. And I mean, I'm just saying like, we don't, I, I, I just find this very interesting. I'm glad you're giving us information because the way I see it is we don't and almost can't know those things until they answer their own questions.
Okay. So.
And then, and then again, I would just like to raise the issue that, in, you know, to me this ties into the fact that massing and density could be different.
Yes.
And it actually are in terms of literal terms.
Right. I mean, the question is, when does density, when does massing or requiring a change in massing cause an issue with respect to lower density? And the answer is, I don't know. I think that's the thing, we need to, we need to explore that so that you have a better technical understanding of whether there actually is an impact on feasibility or not. Which, and the last point that I just want to make here is on the ARB. I, I agree with Jason's question about massing and the fact, to me, it boils down to the input from ARB on massing should come before, right? Because then you approve the project. ARB doesn't approve the project. They may approve some minor finishing and so forth on the project, but you approve the project. So I think, but the question is, when does the project change? Right? And so again, I just think when you defer your, when you have conditions that sort of defer that determination to the ARB, you're giving them a lot of discretion. And I just want to warn you that the way state law is coming down now on housing is that this is going to be more and more of an issue because they're basically saying design review means a policy book in which you've said, this is the criteria for design review and therefore it's a yes, do you meet or no, do you not, do you not meet it? But it's not a subjective determination anymore. So you have to be careful because I think they're going to ratchet down more and more on this aspect of design review becoming more of objective standards. So that's the end of that.
Okay. Thank you, Susan.
Well, I have a question.
Sorry.
I don't know if it's a legal question or a political question, but what we're seeing means in a situation where the state now is reaching deeper and deeper into the local codes and saying, there's no more R1, it's now R2R everywhere in the city, and now this new Weiner bill is, is she going to gut the entire, entire, let's call it, you know, planning code, downtown code, everything is gone. Poof, in one afternoon. What's your, what's your advice to us?
The advice is, it's going to come down, it's a policy decision between not having enough housing and nice buildings, design review. So I, I agree with you. It's, it's happening that local agencies are losing local planning control and that's, that's the process that's happening.
And there's a reason for it.
Well, whether SBA 27 is actually going to pass.
There's debate as to whether there's a reason.
Is, you know, I don't know that it will pass because it is quite controversial and I don't think people have accepted that they can have upzoning basically anywhere around transit. So that is a political determination. But yes, I mean, that's what they're saying. You can't have it all.
Well, look, not only has Susan raised a lot of issues for where you go from here, this whole meeting has. So I'd like to suggest, and Francie, I'd like to start with you, just go around, real quick, a word or a phrase, where do you want to go or is there something that came up you want to follow up on? And my dear friend Peter is going to make a list. Anything you want to flag as important or that you want for next steps? And we'll start here. Is that, can you, you know, just go around? And then, okay, good.
I think just, this has been helpful and interesting and I would just flag ongoing conversation as an important thing to keep.
Ongoing conversation?
Mm-hmm.
Period?
Yeah.
Or did you have something at the end of that that I didn't?
No, just ongoing conversation. I mean, I think that.
Okay. Great. Leslie, anything you want to flag, where you want to go from here?
My thing is always housing. And I think it'd be important for us to all agree that we want to see more housing in Santa Monica and we don't. And where do we fit in the region in that regard? And how do our zoning policies impede housing production? I believe some of them do. I think there are feasibility issues that most of us don't understand when we do our zoning vis a vis housing. And I think it'd be useful to actually get a little more education on economic feasibility of housing development and just kind of look at what we're doing and if it's really productive for the standpoint of housing.
Thank you. Jason?
I don't think I have anything to, to call out more than any of the others.
Okay. Okay.
I would just, maybe just say, I'll, I don't have any extra comments. I'll review the materials and consider everything that was said here. And if I have any comments or questions, I'll share them. But I do think that this was a productive meeting.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
I hope to see the planning commission discussion part of our agenda becoming more active as a result of this. I think that we added a lot of things or came up with a lot of things that get added to that part of our agenda and I hope we start using it more and becoming more proactive.
Great.
I was particularly excited by all these opportunities for getting ourselves educated enough to speed on stuff. I feel like we're always playing with about a third of the deck. The other two-thirds is somewhere over here and now we may be getting a little look at that other third of the deck.
Great. And I want to ask our caregiver and secretary to make a comment.
I think there's going to be some exciting meetings in the future. Good prediction.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think this has been great. Thanks to the commission for coming out on Saturday and doing this. Thank you, Joan, for walking us through it. I think you're working towards, you know, how we get more and more information out to the commission because a lot of the things that were mentioned and asked for today, it's, it's stuff that we have, that we have all these different lists and buckets of information and we collect that and we, we need to figure out better how to get it out to everybody that's interested in it. So I think just hearing what the commission is interested in will help us do that.
Great. Thank you. Susan?
I just hope you have a better understanding and I didn't confuse it even more.
Jean?
I think today's conversation was an excellent launching point to a lot of stuff. So thank you all for coming today and thank you, Joan, for facilitating the meeting as well.
Stephanie?
Second to one, Jean says, I will be reporting this out to the ARB and it will help inform the work we do at ARB and Landmarks. Thank you.
Great. So give yourselves a hand. Good work. A volunteer Saturday morning. Enjoy the rest of the day and let's hope for rain tonight.
I was the one who nagged you and harassed you to come to this event. I'm so glad that we did it and I'm really happy and delighted that we had this conversation for three hours.
Thank you.
Very good.